Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 17, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, would you please call the meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Costron Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device during the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will not take roll call. James Benano, Yvonne Clayton, Eric Gallobo, Jim Henry, John Moore, Daniel Shanameo, Jennifer Souter, Michael Gunnin, and Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
The first item on the agenda is the resolution for 416 Bond Street. Any comments that any planning board member would like to make? If not, can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
Move to approve.
Next resolution is 1012 Asbury Avenue Redevelopment Plan. Anybody have any... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. We have a long meeting today.
Okay. James Benano, Yvonne Clayton, Eric Gallobo, Michael Gunnin.
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. I'm looking at the wrong file. I apologize. 416... So could we scratch that? Because I was looking at the other one. I apologize. So Jim Henry, Jennifer Souter, Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak, Yvonne Clayton, James Benano, Eric Gallobo, John Moore, Daniel Shanameo.
Okay. 1012 Asbury Avenue Redevelopment Plan. Any questions or concerns by the Board? If not, can I get a motion to approve the redevelopment plan?
Second. Okay. And Eric Gallobo, John Moore, James Benano, Yvonne Clayton, Daniel Shanameo, Jennifer Souter, Michael Gunnin, and Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Planning Board, 2022-14, 901 Madison Avenue. Can I get a motion to carry to May 1, 2023 without further notice?
So moved.
James Benano, Councilwoman Clayton, Eric Gallobo, Michael Gunnin. And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes. All right. The first item on the agenda for our presentation is 700 Monroe Avenue. Are all of the notices in order?
Before we start that, just for Madison Avenue, the last application, 901 Madison Avenue, the notices were adequate, so I just want to make sure that everyone understands there is jurisdiction to carry without that further notice, and that meeting will be at 7:00 on May 1.
That's correct.
All right?
Yes.
And yes, for this matter, notices were reviewed, they have been approved, and the Board does have jurisdiction here.
Okay. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I may, Andrew Carras of the Furman Fox Rothschild, on behalf of the applicant, Monroe Avenue Realty LLC, this is a continuation of an application that has been before this Board. I know it went before the DRC recently, and as a result, we made a presentation, certain revisions had been made to the plans. Before we get started, let me just go through briefly what the application is about, and then we'll start getting into witness testimony, just to refresh the Board's recollection. The property is issued 700 Monroe Avenue, Block 2503, comprised of five lots, lots 1 through 5. We're here for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Existing is a commercial building, an auto body facility plus two blocks of flats, total in total 0.34 acres. It's within the Main Street redevelopment area, the commercial shopping zone. What we are proposing is a five-story building. It's a mixed-use building having 60 residential units and approximately 1,000 square feet of commercial retail space. With that, I will call my witnesses to testify. Again, it's a continuation of previous testimonies, result of revisions that were made to the plans. Initially, I'll call our engineer, provide the background with regard to the revisions, to the engineering plans.
Mr. Carras, before we proceed with the witnesses, Board members, we do have a couple new Board members, and I just want to make sure if anyone was not here for the July 25, 2022 meeting. I did speak with Mr. Carras. It is a continuation from that meeting. So if anyone did not listen to the tapes, it doesn't mean that you cannot participate tonight. You can participate. Mr. Carras does not expect that he'll be finished with his presentation for the matter, so I would just recommend that before the next hearing, that if anyone is not listening to the tapes from July 26, that you do so.
Okay. And if you wouldn't mind that, I don't know if you have that information now, or if you can get us the information of who would have to listen, who wasn't here on the July 25. I don't need it now, because we obviously will not finish in an hour and a half.
But I will get you...
So we get the information and send that out to all the Board members that have to listen and to copy Mr. Beekman and Mr. Serpico.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And also for the record, as you noted, Mr. Benano had to recuse himself for this matter.
He's accused. Got it.
Thank you. Swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Jason F. L. L. R. O. M. A. What's up?
Yeah, J. L. S. R. O. M. A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go on.
It's all in the details.
Mr. F. O. G. L. E. R.
Jason, by whom are you currently employed?
Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners, located in 1971 Route 34 in Walt, New Jersey.
In what capacity?
I'm a project manager with them.
If you can give us the benefit of your qualifications, so we can qualify you as a witness, an expert in this...
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil and Environmental Engineering from Rowan University from 2006. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I've been licensed since 2013. I have appeared before other boards. I have not testified in front of Asbury Park, though.
Is everything current? Everything, all your licenses are current?
Correct. They're current.
And you were not here in July? Somebody else was here, or was that...
Somebody else from Mid-Atlantic.
Okay. So same engineering firm, but it wasn't...
Same firm. That person actually moved.
Okay.
Jason, you're familiar with this project, am I correct?
Correct.
And you work on the plan, and it's with the authority of the Board, am I correct? And there is a site plan that had been revised that we're going to be presenting tonight, am I correct?
Correct.
All right. Why don't we identify then, and let's get the last revision date, if we can bring that up?
Sure.
I believe we are up to 8/8.
Yes. Eight?
Eight. Eight-eight?
Eight.
What I'm going to do is, I'm going to have what is up on the screen identified as 8/8 for identification. Why don't you just, for the Board's identification, identify that plan with the last revision that will tell us what's...
Sure. This is the preliminary final major site plans prepared by Mid-Atlantic Engineering. The original plan date is dated 1/14/22, last revised 3/24/23.
All right. Why don't we briefly go through, since it's been quite a while since we appear before this Board on the matter, the site in general, and then what is being proposed under the site, what has been revised?
Sure. The subject property is Block 2503, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, with an area of 14,700 square feet, 0.34 acres. All lots in this application are proposed to be consolidated. It is located in the Main Street redevelopment area, in the community shopping zone. It's located at the corner of Monroe Avenue and Main Street, which is New Jersey State Highway Route 71, with approximately 50 feet of frontage along Main Street and 217 feet of frontage along Monroe Ave. The application, we're requesting variances for rear yard setback where 10 to 25 feet is required and zero is provided. We're also requesting a variance for lot coverage. 90% max is required, where we propose 100%. Also, we're requesting a variance for building coverage with a minimum of 65% and max 90%, where we propose 99%. We have also requested design exceptions for providing a 22.6-foot drive aisle within the internal parking area that's proposed, where a 24-foot minimum is required. We are also proposing three compact parking stalls. Compact parking is allowed if sufficient parking with full-size spaces for 50 cars can be accommodated. With this application, we have 34 spaces, so we will need a design exception for that. The parking required in the redevelopment plan is 0.9 spaces per unit for the residential. There is no requirement for affordable units, so we have 40 market rate units and we have 12 affordable units. With the 0.9 space per unit requirement, we have a requirement of 43 spaces. There's also a retail component, that's 990 square foot of retail along Main Street, that requires two spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail, so two spaces are required for the retail component, for a total of 45 total spaces required. We are providing 34 off-site parking spaces within the building, or on the lower level. There is EV parking required. There's a 10% EV maximum credit that increases the parking provided. Basically, it's 10% of your required parking...
Which would be 4.5.
Which would be 4.5.
And according to the statute, you then round up, so it becomes a credit of 5.
A credit of, correct, a credit of 5. So we're providing 34 physical spaces with that EV credit. There would be 39 spaces provided towards the redevelopment plan requirements. With that, the parking deficit of 45 required versus the 39 provided, we have a six-space deficit. We also will need to request the minimalist exception from RSIS for a total of 115 spaces that are required. We're also providing striping along the front of the street of Monroe Ave for six on-street spaces. Currently, based on the dimensioning of the RSIS's minimum dimensioning between the driveways that exist there, there technically would be five existing spaces that are located on Monroe. We're providing six, so an increase of one space there.
You started going through all the design exceptions. Are you going to go through all 21, or are you going to start with...
Well, a lot of those, or most, are architectural.
Okay, so...
We're only providing the engineer tests, right?
Okay. So, all right, so we did parking.
Correct.
Okay.
Go on.
Do I have a question about parking?
Yep.
Do you want questions now, or at the end?
Sure.
So you're given 39, you need 45...
It's actually 45 rounded up, one. It's a 4.5 credit under the EV statute, so you round it up, so it's five, so 45 minus five is 40. So the requirement is 40. We're providing the electrical equipment as per the statute. So we have 34, so we have a shortage of, I believe, six.
Okay, so it's 34...
So you take it off both ends? So the EV, you take it off both ends, you take it off the 45, plus you're added to the 34?
No, no, no. What we're doing is, 45 is required. 10% of that is 4.5. Under the statute, you round up, so you get your credit of 5. So 45 minus 5, we have a requirement of 40. We're providing 34, so we have a deficit...
Right, and providing 34, that's that 39 versus 40, it's 34 versus 40.
Correct.
And you're asking for us to give the waiver to put five on the street?
There are, no. We're not asking for a waiver. There are five that in the sense are existing, but when we strip it out, will be six. So there'll be an additional space that's created on...
But those spaces are already there.
Yeah, we're not asking for a waiver or anything, which is pointing back...
Again, this is not in the CBD.
What's that?
This project is not in the CBD.
It's not in the Main Street redevelopment area.
Is curve cut on Main and...
Curve cuts all along, correct.
So you're giving 1?
There's only, we'll provide testimony, there's only going to be one curb cut going into the building contrary compared to what we have.
So one curb cut against the space, street spaces?
Are the EV spaces EV-ready or EV...
No, we're going to provide the actual equipment, all the EV spaces will have.
Correct. So yes, we have, we're proposing on Main Street, there's an existing curb cut on Main Street that we're proposing to replace with full-height curb and replace the sidewalk in that immediate vicinity of Main Street. There was DOT work that was done, I believe, within the past year, that added new curb and sidewalk at that intersection, so we're only doing the minimal, just the required to remove that existing driveway entrance on Main Street and replace it with full-grade and new sidewalk.
Can we see that? Because we're kind of stuck on this slide.
That's okay.
If we could just go to wherever you're talking, whatever your talking points are.
Chairwoman, keep doing that. Why don't I swear in our professionals' case, ask you questions? You swear affirm that the testimony you'll provide will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
I did. Thank you.
Can you just go over that one more time? Where are we pointing to?
What I'm going to ask you to do, first go onto Main Street, let's identify where the curb cuts are existing, and how that's going to change them on Monroe.
Sure. Sure. So right in this section here, in front of, right along Main Street, this area is the existing driveway location that we're proposing with a full-height curb and replacing the sidewalk in front of it. And this, as you can see, this whole portion in the intersection, up to the intersection, is all of the newer sidewalk and curb that's been put in during, with the DOT improvements to the intersection. So we're only providing the sidewalk improvements and the full-length curb in this location only, where the driveway was. There is also, I'm going to go back to the existing conditions for a second. There's also three existing driveway openings on Monroe Ave. If you can see where I'm pointing to in this location here...
That's your first one? Your second one with your arrow?
Second one in the mid-block of this frontage here, and then here's the third driveway entrance. Now, in the proposed condition, there's only going to be the entrance into the parking area, all the way down the eastern portion of the property.
So you're only making 2 on Monroe?
2 on Monroe.
Stop it, let me pick up one space. You're getting rid of the curb cut on Main and 2 on Monroe.
Based on the actual dimension spacing between those existing driveways, if you go by RSIS standards for parking on parallel on-street spaces, you want a length of 23 feet. And if you were to space out, dimension that 23 out, 23 feet out between those driveways and eliminate them, we can fit six spaces, and really, existing-wise, only five technically could fit there. Maybe more cars try to cram in there, but it has the dimensioning per RSIS standards for a 23-foot space.
So with the existing curb cuts down, there could be one or all five...
So they're not striped, but in this area between this driveway and this driveway, and this is, I believe, we have, we fit two spaces based on a 23-foot dimension per space. In this area, you can fit another two spaces based on that same 23-foot dimension. And then in this area, up to the frontage, I'm sorry, I believe we could fit one in here and then two more on the eastern side of this driveway opening. So that's saying, existing-wise, based on that dimensioning, you could fit five spaces, and we're restriping this to provide six.
And going back to Main Street, are you picking up a space there by eliminating that curb cut?
There's actually no parking provided in this location. I believe the parking along Main Street is just south of where our frontage is. And then this area, I believe, stripes for no parking.
How big is that area, like from the corner to where you're going to have, in front of the existing curb cut? So we're saying that's like diagonally off, that's striped off, with yellow down?
No, it's more, it's striped as if it were a shoulder, essentially. There's no, there's no yellow markings of no parking. There's striped stall parking south of there. Being in the state right away, I don't know if parking's allowed in that location. The striping that's provided along this area ends just south of our frontage. So if parking is to be allowed, that, we would have the room to pick up a space there. It's just, right now, there's no parking provided there, and...
Because the driveway's there.
Because the driveway's there.
That would be up to the state if you wanted to restrict that.
Right. It would also be up to DOT.
Correct.
But the potential is there to pick up an additional parking space on Main Street.
Key word, potential.
Key word. Well, we are picking one up on Monroe.
So other improvements we have along in Monroe, right away, we're proposing a five-foot wide tree pits, a nine-foot wide concrete walk, and then what has changed from the previous application, we previously had raised planter boxes along the building facade. We've now replaced that with a three-foot wide planted strip. Other changes that have been made to the plans, if you see in here, there's this one-and-a-half-foot building overhang that was due to some architectural changes that were made. This overhang runs the entire length of the Monroe, as well as the Main Street frontage along the building. The other changes, the retail space was actually reduced down to 990 square feet from 1,024 square feet. Our previous plan showed two compact parking spaces, one in this eastern corner and one right on the other side of this entrance. We have added a third location on the northwest corner of the parking stalls and striped it accordingly. We've also, as requested, we've provided our 19-foot-long curved line opening dimension added to the plans. And at the request of the Board last time, we've added a garage opening pedestrian warning system, which essentially is an illuminated sign above the garage door with LED lights that activate their motion control, essentially, when the garage door opens, that they'll flash. And there's also an audio warning for visually impaired to know that this garage door is open and that cars may be exiting the building.
Can you just review once again that three-foot planter? Is that in, is that in the city right away? Or...
Well, the planter's been removed.
Or three-point, so that's, I thought you'd mentioned it was there. It's now, it's gone?
No, the previous submission, our plans had a raised planter box, and now it's replaced that, it's a three-foot planted strip. So this is no longer going to be concrete in this area, this is a planted, you know, mulched area with...
Okay, so it's planted. Is that in the right-of-way or not in the right-of-way?
Yes.
Which?
It is in the right-of-way.
It is in the right-of-way. So it's three feet into, 3.5 feet into the city's right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that going all the way out, or is that just, you know, just the architecture?
Yeah. Correct.
Street trees? I see seven on Monroe. Some of the renderings make it look like there's street trees on Main, but the site graphics look like no street trees on Main. Is that right?
Correct. There's no proposed street trees on Main.
Will there be anyone that's going to be testifying to regarding plantings? Or no? Or is this it? This is it?
This is it, yeah.
Okay, so there are no street trees, so that's also a design waiver, correct? Or no?
Perhaps not. The DOT improvements included doing street trees, street lighting, so just like up at R-Bar and some of the other applications we've had on Main, they are, I believe, scheduled as part of the final...
Okay, so it's not required by the developer?
Correct. This is...
Is this the grand city gap for trees?
So what's your, go ahead, go ahead, Yvonne.
So as part of the 71, that's how the street trees and the benches are going to be placed on Main Street.
You're getting whatever...
So, okay.
...is approved under that.
So the plantings, the street trees that you're proposing, is what's required?
Correct.
On Monroe?
On Monroe.
Yes.
It is. So where, which plan do I see that?
One good.
Or do you want to go in order?
You're a little ahead of us.
Do you want to go in order?
Why don't we do this? It's a focus right now, so why don't we address it?
Go ahead. Okay, so...
So we have seven street trees, 30-foot on center. We replaced the previous plantings with American hackberry, that I believe is the recommendation of the town, of the city. And then we have a mix of evergreen and flowering shrubs along the building facade in that three-foot planting area, or three and a half foot, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else that the Board would like to see changed in terms of what is being proposed?
Just in the planting?
In the planting?
In the planting? I'm certainly not the planting expert, but anybody? Everybody's all right with what's being proposed?
I think last time, we asked for more green ready along Main, Monroe Street, so this is definitely an improvement.
The question is, I don't worry, what would happen to the building if you don't get the waiver for the parking spaces, so engineering or construction?
If we don't get the waiver for it, then you would have to...
I think, do I ask the engineer, or do I ask the...
Well, it's illegal. You can ask me. I mean, if we don't get the waiver, and the Board doesn't grant the application, parking not being sufficient, we would have to come back with the apartment plans.
Do you know what would happen with the apartment? Is that the best answerable model?
Well, we would have to revise the plans to come down to the apartment mix to meet parking. Case, I think we'd be eliminating, if I'm correct, five or six units.
And one of the other things that you're requesting is the compact spaces, which are three compact spaces, and I believe that you're not allowed to have any compact spaces. Is that correct?
Correct. The compact requirement is allowed if you have, if you're providing 50 spaces...
Okay, so that's a waiver as well?
That's a waiver, correct.
Okay.
Sidewalk with Monroe's 9, what is it on Main?
Sidewalk with, I can actually get that for you.
I can actually get that for you. Approximately 13 feet.
Yeah, double check the measurement on Monroe.
Well, so that's nine foot, I believe, clear to the, to the, to the tree planting pits. So, so you actually have to the curb, you know, your, your 14 feet.
And that's from the building face?
No, that, that's from the face of the three-and-a-half-foot planter, planting area. So from building face to curb...
Then you have nine-foot of concrete and then a five-foot tree pit?
So wide area.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, building face to curb is 17 and a half feet.
Have we already covered the fact that we're at 100% coverage or did we already talk about that? Okay, can we talk about that? All right, can we go over all of the setbacks, or lack of setbacks at this point to, on, on all the sides?
Sure. Let me go back to the zone. Front yard setback, we have a requirement of zero-foot setback, we're providing zero. Minimum side yard setback, also zero feet, we're, we're providing zero. And like I had mentioned, we're requesting a variance for rear yard setback, where 10 to 25 foot is allowed, and we're providing zero as well.
Before, before we go, go on, can you tell me why? Cause this is a brand-new building. Why are we going with zero-foot setback?
On the rear yard?
On the rear yard.
Because you're gonna have a building that's butted up against it eventually. And the point to have, you're basically gonna have two buildings that are facing one another, rear of the buildings. So to have any setback provided there, in a sense, doesn't make any sense in terms of development of sites.
The same question will be for the lot coverage and previous coverage, so why don't we go to that? Why, on a brand-new building, why are we at 99%? On a brand-new building?
Well...
That's the question.
Since we're providing 34 parking spaces, parking, and we're asking for an exception or a waiver from that as well, you know, to provide as much parking as we could within this lot for the, for the units that we have, you know, it requires for the proper circulation and to fit those spaces that we build out as, as far out to the property line as we could. So that, that's giving us, increasing our coverage or maxing out our coverages for both building and parking, as well as, you know, providing zero setback to the line. Any, any other setback provided is gonna eliminate more parking, we'll be asking for more relief for provide, the parking provided as well.
Were there any other scenarios considered for providing parking in other buildings in town, you know, stacking systems?
Well, other buildings, in the CBD, you can do that on other sites.
There's nothing in the MSRP that prohibits that exactly.
You're talking about within the building?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about other sites.
No, no, it's within, right, other options, as opposed to having to do 99% coverage.
I mean, obviously, constructing underground is a significant expense, but the stacking system seemed to be an interim solution to that kind of problem. Do you know if anybody gave you a guide exploring that?
No, I believe the, the height that we currently have in that garage wouldn't allow for a stacking system.
And is there any subservice obstruction to putting the building deeper?
Or, or, or it's still a brand-new building?
If one has it there.
Why don't we just bring it up higher?
So is there, is there a service investigation on site?
We can, we can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it hasn't been investigated?
I don't, I'm not sure if it has been, but we can certainly, if it has, to take a look at it.
Right, cause, cause I'm...
I don't think it is first opened here yet.
I, I have a, I have a very large concern about the fact that we're at 99% coverage.
And is that why...
Yeah, well, like I say, just keep it in mind, you know, where the back of the building is, ultimately, you know, you have to anticipate something's...
I'm saying front, saying you've got the whole coverage is 99%. Brand-new building. Why can't we hit the mark that is put, that, where the requirements are?
You know, it...
And why do we have, may I continue?
Sure.
We have, I just need to say, we have 21 design waivers on a brand-new building. That's a brand-new building!
It also begs the question, when you look at the site itself, you have, as indicated, 17 and a half feet from the facade to the curb. So if you pull that building back even more...
Right.
You're gonna have an even more significant expanse of basically...
And you could put balconies on that are real balconies, as opposed to Juliet balconies.
But then you're limiting yourself with the number of units, the number of affordable units that you can actually provide on the site.
It's up to the developer.
Oh, no, but one moment, so don't forget, the plan wants the building to be at the street line. We want the building to be at the street line, Main Street, and Monroe Avenue. We want that engagement. What the plan wants is setbacks where your interior building is meeting other interior buildings. So next to the single-family residence on, on Monroe is where we were hoping to have that elbow or a setback.
Some space.
And, and the engineer may not be able to speak to it. He won't be able to speak to, you know, what was the decision-making that went into, you know, this, this parcel? Why, why did we put ourselves in this, this trap? Just waiting for someone else. But this is, this is what we had to work with, so he's testifying that, you know, in order to provide as many standard-sized spaces sufficient aisle width, he had to go to basically the, the lot perimeter.
But as indicated, the design that was contained, that is contained in the redevelopment plan, the Main Street redevelopment plan, is front yard setback of zero, to have those buildings on that lot.
Exactly.
And that's what that does, remember, you're on a corner lots, you're on Main Street and also on Monroe, and it accomplishes that consistent with that plan. You're talking about the rear of the building, keep it in mind, you're gonna have other buildings that are gonna be developed and butted up against it, and you look at...
Well, no, the adjoining lot on Monroe is not within the redevelopment area, that's in year 1.
The adjoining...
The adjoining lot on Monroe.
Okay.
Right, and there's a house there that could use some relief.
So he's down the line, it's a little six-foot setback, but yeah, we're up to the, the line where 10-foot was envisioned to be the line.
Right.
So I get that the ground floor, we're up to the lot line to maximize parking, but then as the building goes up, I know it, it does step back, but I think it's just a handful of feet, it's not 10 feet for sure. And not on that facade? No, on the eastern facade, steps back like three feet towards two and a half.
And if you increase the setback, the rear setback, could you then put windows in the bedrooms?
That I would defer to the, the architect, whether you could put the windows there or not.
On the rear yard, that's the corridor that runs along the rear of that building.
The hallway.
Corridor, hallway.
Inside the building.
That, that will be a discussion with the architect, because that's going to be a large concern of ours as a...
Now, I'll move to the vehicle turning plans. We have added two vehicle turning plans, which show, this first one is showing compact car maneuvering through the parking area, in and out of designated parking spots that were, you know, in the eastern corner and then the northwest corner here. Comparable, this is comparable to like a Honda Civic trying to maneuver through here, which shows that it's able to maneuver with a decent amount of, bless you, a decent amount of room through, this, this is the drive aisle that is less than 24 feet, so there's plenty of room for the compact car to maneuver through this space, as well as pulling in, get, backing into the space and pulling out as close to this entrance. The other turning plan that we provided is for a full SUV, which is more comparable to a Cadillac Escalade that is coming in through and accessing, you know, any of the standard-sized spaces, as well as maneuvering through the reduced drive aisle to access one of the standard-sized parking spaces as well. If there's no questions on the maneuver plans...
Can you just identify where the handicap park is?
We have a handicap stall located here and here. And this one will also be included as EV, as, as a, one of the EV spaces has to be ADA compliant as well.
I don't know if our engineer has anything regarding this, but to me, that full-size SUV looks like it's, every time it's making a turn, it's in somebody else's spot. That's just from the visual that I can see. I'd be a little concerned about that, but I don't see these every day, so I can't. It's just a personal opinion.
Your professional opinion, can the vehicles, based upon that design, maneuver safely within those parking spaces?
Are cars parked in those parking spaces when they're maneuvering?
When, when we analyze and we do this, this analysis, we're making sure that whether it's, not just the tires, but the car overhangs from the bumpers as well...
Right.
Are not encroaching into any of the spaces. So I can see how this looks as if it's encroaching into the space, maybe we're projecting this space line through, it's, it's, it's right up to the edge, it's, it might not be on it, I, I couldn't give you a dimension from that, how far off it is, but it's not encroaching into that parking space.
And the one in the corner? That, the lower one, I'm sorry, the lower one?
The lower one.
Yes.
Yep, see, so these are your, from your turning movements, this is your bumper overhang line. It's not encroaching into any of these stalls.
You're against the wall though.
Yeah, this, like I said, it, it, it will, you know, require, you will be maneuvering, but it's not, it's not encroaching into any of the stalls, it can be done and successfully parked in that spot.
Maybe I heard you, Yvonne. I apologize. So you got two ADA spots, one of them's gonna be an EV spot, which you get credit for less parking. So if I have an EV car, but don't have a handicap placard, I mean, I don't see how the crossover works.
There are five other, why don't you identify the other EVs?
Okay, but, okay, but you're, you're, you're getting credit for six, but one of them's a handicap spot. So if six people wanna charge, but one can't charge because it's a handicap spot, I don't see the crossover.
The statue.
Okay.
And it sure is that if there's handicap person with a vehicle that's electric, they can charge?
I, I totally agree with that, I think that's wonderful and everything, but...
I understand that disconnect in the counting.
Right, okay, but if that's totally legal, I have no problem.
State's...
I, I understand fully what you're saying.
Nope, thank you. Good enough, thank you.
Next, we have the grading and utility plan, just to kinda give you an overview of the changes that have occurred on this, on this plan. One of the changes we had made to this plan is this northwestern stairwell, we lowered the finished floor elevation of that to, I believe, somewhere between eight or nine inches, and the reasoning behind that was to, to soften the, the slopes on this sidewalk and across the tree wells in this location of Monroe Ave. So this grading all essentially got lowered eight to nine inches here. We have a, maybe a cross slope of this tree pit ranging from three to five percent as you, as you go west along Monroe. We've also, directly on here, the changes, we, we've increased this roof leader collection pipe, upsized it to another, to 10-inch PVC, and this is to accommodate the proposed green roof that has been added to the design of this, within this plan set.
Does the green roof change 50%?
No.
I had a quick question, the green roof plan list, I couldn't, is it on there? I'm missing it, I saw vegetation, but I didn't see that in actual...
So, so there is guidelines that were provided in the appendices of the stormwater management report, there's specifications. There, it hasn't been added to the plan, which is something we, you know, if required, we could do. But basically, the planting's in there if we wanna jump to the green roof plan.
Why don't we do this, let's just finish with this, then let's go to the green roof.
And just for the, just for the record, I think that it should be added, so that we can have it all in these plans, instead of looking at a stormwater management report.
So no changes were made to the other utilities, but I'm just gonna go through here, we have water and sanitary sewer service coming off of Monroe, we provide gas service to the northeastern corner, where there will be a pressure regulator on the exterior with internal meters within the garage, pending, obviously, New Jersey Natural Gas approval of, of providing those meters within the garage. We also have a roof leader collection system to collect runoff from the building, which is, that runs from east to west along the Monroe right-of-way and ties into this existing inlet structure at the, at the corner of Monroe. That's...
All right, let's go to the green roof, let's discuss that.
So this is the green roof plan that's been added to the, to the plan set, it's in this hatch area, if you're following my cursor here, it's essentially, it's a 4,450 square foot green roof. And this detail here shows a cross-section of what, what the green roof is comprised of. You essentially have a vegetated layer at the top, which is a mixture of grasses and flowering trees and shrubs. Then you have this growing media...
Excuse me, flowering? Sorry, no trees in, right?
Not trees, yeah, I'm sorry, like, exactly, grasses and shrubs. We have a 12-inch growing media here, which is essentially comprised of a mixture of different soils and aggregates, which follow the, which would follow DEV, BMP manual guidelines. And then you have this drainage layer here, so once, once the stormwater is, filters through your vegetated layer and into this growing media, anything that's not absorbed into the soil or absorbed into the, the plant root system itself will bypass through to this drainage layer, which is a four-inch drainage layer consisting of clean stone. And also in that layer to collect the stormwater that, that filters through, we have a, a system of six-inch perforated PVC pipe that will collect that runoff and tie it into the existing downspout system, roof leader collection system of the building. These squared areas on the plan here are actually these deck drains that are sized for any larger storms than water quality storm, that will overflow and discharge into these, these drains and out through this pipe system, out to the roof leader collection system. So this green roof was sized to store the volume of the water quality storm for the Asbury Code. Within that 12-inch, all that, the water quality storm is retained within that 12-inch growing media here, it has a little excess room for storms above it, and then any, anything above the volume that's contained within this soil media, well, like I said, either bypass through and filter into this drainage layer and out, or overflow into the deck drains and connect to the roof leader system. This whole green roof area is lined and must be inspected at least four times a year to make sure that there's no leaks in the liner, to prevent any water from sitting on top of this roof. So it, it's essentially a whole line system that would collect, keep, make sure all that, that runoff is not discharging onto this roof and it's going out through the, the filtered layer, out through the roof leader collection system.
Is it elevated?
Yes, it, it, it's, it is elevated. There are, you have this concrete edge, we actually have a maintenance walkway through here to get access to this, this portion of the building on the south.
And no permanent irrigation, right, just during establishment, or did I...
There may need to be irrigation, if, if any irrigation is needed, irrigation system would be very minor in nature, but there's a potential, these are drought-tolerant species that would be proposed with this, shade, as well as shade tolerant. So if there's long periods of, within the summer months that, where you might get a dry spell, there may be the need for an additional irrigation system, but for the most part, these are drought, drought-tolerant species that would, that, that should survive, but...
Just during establishment, though, that it would just be water with a hose or something, like there's some capacity to have water drain?
Yeah, something, something very minor, we're not talking like a, you know, a full irrigated sprinkler system or anything like that. It's just supplemental irrigation.
Since we're on this plan, looking at the loft units, I noticed that on the back of those loft units, there appear to be mechanical systems, am I correct?
Correct. Correct.
Why don't we identify that?
So along the back here are all the mechanical systems with the lofts. There's also other areas designated here for mechanical HVAC equipment. All this equipment is not visible from the street level, it's all screened by, by the lofts, it's in, it's behind, it's on the backs of these loft walls, and like I said, the other mechanical areas in here are between your green roof and the loft, so you're, you're screened from the street, the, you're not going to be able to see that from, from the street view.
So the tenants don't have access to that back end?
None, no.
So between the, the green roof and the back of the lofts, that's not common there?
Correct.
I've asked this question before, but this green roof does not count as impervious, is that right?
Go back to your cross-section of the, your green roof. I, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that there's going to be a six-inch perforated pipe?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, you've got, you've got a foot of material.
Yeah.
How's that work? How are you gonna, you've got, you've got a foot of material, you've got a six-inch perforated pipe, do you, is this perforated pipe going to be directly on the liner?
This perforated pipe, so the dimensioning on this, this granular thing actually should be expanded to accommodate for the fact that you're going to have a six-inch PVC, so this would get deeper, it would be sitting right above this permanent liner. So this four-inch granular base actually should be larger to be able to fit that, that perforated PVC pipe would go in that drainage layer in that stone.
Okay, so what's going to, what's going to be eliminated? Are you going to eliminate the soil, are you going to just raise it?
No, you're just, you're elevating it to accommodate for that additional stone.
Okay, so instead of 16 inches, what's it going to be?
I would say 20, about 20 inches. If you're 16-inch total, you're adding another four inches of stone.
Okay, so that needs to be revised then?
Correct.
Now, is that perforated pipe, see, you've got it laid out here, it's going to be perforated pipe along that entire planting bed, correct?
Correct, except for at this crossing, where we have the maintenance walk.
Okay, so is that going to be stepped? Your maintenance walk, are you going to have to step up over the pipe and back down again?
No, this maintenance walk would be, would, or the PVC pipe would be below the walkway. Or I guess, yes, you.
How are you going to do it?
We're not showing it as elevated, but I think, yes, that, that there would have been elevated, you'd have to have an elevated essentially, section of this to get above that pipe.
Say there's stepping over it where you have an elevated step to go over.
It's all gravel, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
Right, so then you'll add that to the.
We'll add that.
We'll add that as well.
Is the entire walkway going to be elevated, or just the, for a pipe crossing?
I would believe that just at the crossing.
And the stormwater report that has the plant list, that was from the last, we got that the last time, the storm, the report with the plant, the green roof plant list that you referred to, is that something that we had?
From what was, yes, what was recently submitted, when these plant, when this plant set was submitted.
Can we go, can we look at that? I don't, I don't know, I, I'm not seeing it, but maybe I'm looking in the wrong place. Was it in the resubmission folder? If, if nobody guys want us, they'll see it with the.
So it's an appendix D of the stormwater report? So you mix up your, your grasses and ground covers, your flowering plants, and your pollinating plants.
Thank you, that was good.
Let's go back to sheet seven, and explain your deck drain detail.
I'm sorry, explain your.
Direct, deck drain detail.
So this, this drain is essentially like a, a plastic-type ADS drain with a, with a grated cover surrounded by six inches of gravel around it. And these areas are just sitting, you know, strategically, not strategically, but just evenly placed throughout, through this entire green roof.
Now, that drain is, the gravel around that drain is strictly around the vertical section, or is it around the horizontal run?
The horizontal run of, of what, just the, at this drain location, you're saying it along the whole PVC pipe?
Along the whole PVC, where?
Just around that, this portion's just around the drain.
Just around the vertical section?
Yes.
How about the horizontal section?
That's sub-surface, right? I mean, you wouldn't.
Yeah, this is, this is going vertically down and connecting into that, into that PVC pipe.
Okay.
So this, this stone, the, hold on, let me, if I can draw this for you. Would be inclusive of, of this up, all the way down to where it hits to the PVC underdrain. So if you're looking at that, like essentially that stone's wrapped around the entire vertical as well.
Okay, so it's about a, a foot or so?
Correct.
Okay, and are you going to surround the PVC with any gravel, or is it going to be the perforated pipe?
Well, the, the perforated pipe will be in that gravel layer, like that we said we would adjust and increase that spacing for, and then this, this gravel stone would go down to that gravel layer. So where you'd have the underdrain would be completely surrounded by gravel, and that vertical to the, to the deck drain itself will also be encased, encased with the six-inch gravel.
Sometimes I get like covered with mulch, right, because I assume it's at the surface of the soil, or has it got a rounded dome on top?
This, this does not have a rounded dome top, it, it's got, it's just grated at the top. I'd have to, I'm not sure this size, if there is accessories, if you can accommodate with a dome thing, but basically that's where the, that's why there's a, a maintenance plan to be inspected at least four times a year to make sure when they're, when they're doing their landscaping.
Usually, usually the mulch be covered over, you know.
Understood, I mean, if there, if there is, I haven't looked to see if there is a dome type casting, but that's definitely something, if it's, if we can accommodate on this type of pipe, that we can consider doing that to minimize maintenance to that.
If you can't accommodate that kind of a fixture on this particular pipe, maybe you ought to look at the entire drain, because.
I'm sure there's something that they can find, I mean, this is an installation, apparently, that's been used, and has successfully been used on other roofs, so we'll look to see whether or not there's a dome that can be done, or some sort of protection to ensure that mulch doesn't get in there. Any other questions with regard to the green roof?
I have something about regarding the mechanical. Can you tell me that, when you get back to, if you blow that out a little bit, where you have the elevator bulkhead, and then you have the mechanical, can you tell me if that mechanical that's there, does that emit any noise? Whatever's going to be there?
I would defer that to the architect to testify to that.
Okay, because I'm assuming that whatever is on the lofts, that does emit noise.
Yeah, those are the many.
Those are the ones that are going to emit noise.
I'm sorry?
The ones that are on the other side of the lofts will emit noise, because that's like your condensers, your AC, whatever. But what I was concerned about is that mechanical there, whatever's going to be there, is there, if it does emit noise, let's just say, would it be able to be moved next to the other one, further away from the loft? So the people that are right next to it are not going to hear it, whatever is there.
We'll have.
So when we get to the expert for that, I'm going to be asking that as well.
Sure.
I apologize to go back, I know you asked earlier, but I did have two questions, comments about the plant schedule for down below, on page 10, not the green roof. Just like, yeah, that, is it possible to swap out the two, the boxwood and the nandina for something that's native or not? Boxwood or nandina? Some in the same size?
Yeah, we, what do you recommend?
I mean, it could be anything, Ilex or something that's similar scale, I just, boxwood, I always get worried about seeing boxwood, and then the nandina, even though it probably wouldn't be invasive in that site, it's just that there's other alternatives.
Yeah, if there's a preference, we're fine.
So we would put that in as, as the, the planner would help.
Sure.
Make that the proper decision as to what should be there instead of the boxwoods.
And the, and the nandina.
And the.
The nandina, the bamboo.
We'll move on to, back a little bit to the lighting plan, Mark. So the lighting plan, it consists of 23 ceiling-mounted LED light fixtures within the parking area itself, that has not changed from the previous submission. These, those are noted as the C fixtures on this plan. The A fixtures have been replaced from a wall scotch-type fixture to a soffit fixture, that, a flush-mounted soffit fixture that's within that one and a half foot building overhang along both Main Street and Monroe Ave. That's a total of 20, we have 18 fixtures total, combined along Main and Monroe. And from the last time, this, this model has been revised to essentially remove any of the existing lighting that was omitted from, omitted from the, across Monroe Ave and on Main Street. So this is just the light levels that are provided from the proposed lighting as part of this design. So along Monroe Ave, we're maintaining a half-foot candle at the curb line across almost the entire frontage, and then on Main Street, we have one-foot candle up at the curb line.
And what about, what about what's happening at the, at the two-story dwelling? That's on the east side. I see that that's, there's almost a 1.9, there's a 0.9, there's a 1.
Where is it? Oh, this is all within the, the parking area.
Oh, that's, so that is, that's covered, so that is not visible to that house, or their backyard?
Correct, that's not spillage on, that's not spillage onto there, that's a wall.
That's a wall, so they won't see that.
That's all interior.
Okay.
Even though the label's outside of there.
Okay, that's why, just want to make sure.
Yep.
So there is no exterior lighting on the east side at all?
Correct. So this, here's a detail we're showing, this is the, the exterior lighting along Main Street and Monroe, that's that recessed soffit lighting, light fixture. Where, within the garage here, same thing, where we have this LED typical ceiling-mounted lighting within the garage, and then up on the roof, we haven't changed fixtures that we previously had, we have these architectural, you know, wall-mounted fixtures at the, the doorways for the, for the lofts. What has changed on here is just the configuration of how these, these loft areas look and where these lights are located, but we haven't changed the fixture there.
Can you blow that up a little, because there's, I, I'm having a hard time to see. Any one, any one of those, it's fine.
Yep. So these are provided at, at the doorways, very, down, downlighting, there's no uplighting, it's just a down, a low-intensity downlight fixture.
Am I correct that the lighting does not exceed 2,700 calories?
Correct, the lighting does not exceed 2,700.
And these are all dark sky compliant?
Correct, no, they're dark sky compliant, there's no, all the lighting is downward-facing.
There's a power pit wall?
There's a, there's a power pit wall, yes.
Any questions on the light?
Just, just out of curiosity, I don't, I don't recall, the, the YMC or YWC that's across the way, how many floors is that? Is that like four? Also, so they would be pretty much even, so they won't see this, they won't see any of this.
Correct, they wouldn't be looking down and be able to see that.
Okay.
That's four floors, and I think the first floor is pretty high.
Yeah, that's why, just want to make sure that they, that they're not seeing any of this either. Okay.
Yeah, I think the only thing in the vicinity is Monroe Tower.
The what?
Monroe Tower.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll have.
They'll see some, but that's, yeah, this is all downward-facing, dark sky compliant.
They see everything.
Right, they see everything, right. Right, okay.
It's during Christmas, lit up like a Christmas tree.
Okay.
So I have for lighting, if we have any other questions on lighting.
Any other questions on lighting, or?
So, we did go through landscaping, there were no changes to the soil erosions, incineration control plans or details from the previous submission, and in terms of construction details, that, that they changed, we have added, this is the pedestrian warning sign that I had mentioned earlier, where this is an illuminated LED backlight lit sign, it's above the garage door opening, and essentially it's motion-activated when the garage door opens, this will light up and also emit an audio sound for the visually impaired.
Do I make the street printer on Monroe Ave? I think the stuff on, on Main Street, is already there?
On Monroe Ave, all, all we're providing is bike racks.
Why should I identify?
So we have two on the eastern end here, and then the other, the other two to the, to the west of the driveway entrance.
And is there any bike parking inside the building? Is there any of the garage space that's outside that changed?
No, there, there is none on these plans, no, there's no bike parking provided in the building.
Is it a corner? No, it's a master plan goal.
That's all the testimony we have in terms of the engineering plans. Board has any additional questions?
We could go through the report. Unless someone has some questions.
There's no new engineering report, the report.
Yeah, this, that's, I didn't think everything in my report for the engineering side.
Why don't we do this, why don't we just mark your report, all right, just so we can make reference to it, this, I believe, would be B3, identification, am I correct? B1 was the original inside report from July 25th, 2022. B2 was the report dated July 21st, 2022, from CCH, again, submitted July 25th, 2022, so this would be B3 for identification today's date. I believe we have hit all the items that pertain to the engineering review of the matter that are referenced in the report. I don't think there's any additional.
Are we going to get a, I see that there was a, a phasing plan is not submitted?
We'll get that, we'll.
All right, so we, I would, I would prefer not to waive that?
No, we'll provide, we'll provide a phasing plan, provide testimony.
Okay, so you got a phasing plan for next time? Okay, so you got a phasing plan for next time? Do we have the operations, operation time of the retail space, because I'm looking at number six of three of nine?
Yeah, that'll be towards the end of the test, when I'll have somebody from SAC that testifies as to the garbage, trash removal, the retail use, and also as to phasing. Ordinarily with the phasing, the way we've been doing it is that we meet with Mr. Bonn and we go through the phasing plan, and within the resolution, we'd be a meeting with the city to make sure there's the comprehensive plan.
Right, so you'll, you'll bring us the solid waste and this disposing of that, you're going to, what about the signage, does somebody else is going to testify to signage?
We're going to have to run the plans to provide that.
Right, so we'll see that.
Correct.
All right, we did lighting, that's number 15.
In essence, with the signage, just to give heads up, there'll be the number over the door for the entrance into the residential units, over the retail spaces, you'll note there are at least four doors that are reflected on the plan, it's only a thousand square feet, but it gives flexibility to be able to break that space up either one tenant, one, two, or three tenants, we can break that up depending upon who the tenant is that wants to rent the facility.
All right, so you'll put that, you'll add that to the plan?
We'll put that in.
Next time, yes, we have a signage plan.
That'll depend upon how many tenants rent it.
There was a question about in item number 15E, it's, there's a, there's a lighting fixture that says it does not appear to be a full cutoff, has that been resolved?
Yeah, those are the plans that were.
No, but were they resolved? I don't, I have to have, I have to have a nod from Jason.
They testified earlier that they swapped that light out.
That they swapped it out, so we're okay?
Yep.
Okay. And everything was 2,700? And will somebody speak about the provision about providing appropriate storage, which is number 21 in the, in the engineer's report, is that someone else?
That's architectural.
Architectural will take care of that. Recycling materials, somebody else will take care of that as well? And stormwater management?
We went through that.
Okay, are we okay, Jason, on the stormwater management for number 23A through F? Are we good?
I think we're good for the most part, it goes back to your concern about the coverage exceeding what's existing and what's permitted.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the green roof technically is within your ordinance, so in a sense, they've satisfied that requirement. If you're looking for more storage, I don't know if you guys have considered doing anything underground, or if you could even do that, is it contaminated?
Someone else would be testifying to what's going on, but there are monitoring wells, which would prohibit us from going underground.
They've done what they can do. I'd call it substantial performance with ordinance, in fancy language.
Is that, sorry, is that just on the gas station side?
We monitor wells? Yeah, I don't know if who has extended off the side. Substantial.
All right, somehow that stormwater management doesn't sit well with me, but that would be a waiver that we would have to provide, is that correct? Because that, you're asking for that waiver about stormwater management.
Well, what, what would we need?
Well, it says, it says maximum pervious coverage, right, which I'm guessing, that's not stormwater, that's something else, that's impervious.
That's a different, same ordinance.
Okay, all right, okay.
It's a bulk requirement.
Bulk requirement, okay. You know, water is water to me.
No, no, I get it, but Jason is saying that the way they're managing their runoff complies with the parts of the ordinance that manage runoff, then yeah, then they're complying with the stormwater.
Okay.
I just, I do want to go back to science for a second. So are you saying that for the commercial tenant signage, there's going to be just however many independent tenants at whatever time, they'll just come in for whatever signage they want to have?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll come in with the plan, putting the number over the residential, ordinarily with the numbers for the commercial, what the city's been dealing in, you have the one number for the building, and you break it up into units. It works, because you don't know, again, with the tenants, if you're going to have one tenant, two, three, or four, depending upon what tenants you get. One good thing about what we're proposing is, you can have, in a sense, micro-commercial tenants in there, which I think is needed in the city, smaller spaces for smaller tenants, and we provide for that. But the signage would be dependent upon how many tenants we have, so yeah, they would have to come in individually.
And you're just going to do whatever style is whatever their business, whatever they suit? So there's not going to be a uniform signing scheme like in the ordinance, where it says we have multiple tenants and multiple uses, we want that unified.
I would think that we would want it to be unified, but in the ordinance it says it should be unified.
You have the band, which is consistent, and you'd have consistent size signs, then the tenant would individually have according to.
According to the ordinance, what's allowed?
No, I'm saying their tenant is going to pick whatever colors and logos.
Is that what the ordinance says? That we can, that they can do, that's the issue. If the ordinance says that they can pick whatever colors they want, as long as it's within a certain size, then that's fine.
The sign ordinance says in a multi-tenant building, you're supposed to have a uniform signing plan, so it's not going to be uniform, that they would be seeking a waiver.
So it sounds like you will be seeking a waiver.
The size, the signage would be.
The size of the signage, but not the signage?
Not all the other stuff.
Right, so you'll be seeking for, you'll just be seeking a waiver.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And, I'm sorry, one other thing, when you're saying you don't know how many tenants, how many doors do we have coming into that retail space? Wouldn't that drive how many tenants are going to be there?
That's a, what they testified to the first time, and which Mr. Karas has kind of alluded to tonight, is it's flexible, as soon as they figure out who's going to occupy, how much floor area they want, they'll divide it.
Right, and then they'll add doors?
They can have, they can have as many as four doors, so four separate tenants, or it could be two doors into one tenant.
Correct, this is consistent with some of the other buildings we've done, the board had requested that we do it this way.
They have, so right now we have four doors, potentially four tenants, could be less.
Yeah, we just did this a year ago on 316, this is exactly what the board had requested, and as a result, that's what we're replicating here.
And those entrances and the storefronts help them, help them meet the, you know, design scheme on the frontage with the window areas and the vertical alignment above, things like that.
Anybody else, any other planning board members have any questions for the witness? I'm assuming that this witness is, we're finished with this witness? Any other questions from the planning board members? Any questions from the professionals? No? Okay.
Paul, I'm sorry, I have one question, I just wanted to clarify one minute. In the letters, we have 61 units, residential units.
It's reduced to 60.
It's 60 and 12.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, compliant with the formal requirement in the UAC.
Okay. Is there, is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question of this witness? Up to the microphone, please? And it has to do with what the witness has testified to today.
Certainly, my name is Chris Satorski, I own the building adjacent to the plant, the project, 508 Main Street, and I just want to get it on record that I have sewer line that crosses their lot onto Monroe, I want everybody to know it so that you don't show up, they wanted you surprised, that's it.
Wait. Hang on, which one are you?
Yeah, Paul, I'm, uh, do you want to store it on?
Which one?
On Main Street.
Main Street.
508.
508.
And your sewer line goes underneath to?
It goes up to Monroe as opposed to right up to Main.
And you guys are aware of that?
We're aware of it, and somehow, some way, we're going to have to deal with that, obviously.
So just don't want anybody to show up day one, you know, I don't have to swear to that.
I'm not aware of the court. Yeah, it's, but you may, you may contact me.
My lawyer did a job, yeah.
We spoke, and it's something that we're going to have to deal with, we don't want to just all of a sudden dig down and.
Do we have an idea here?
Oh, sure, I have a.
Okay, cool, all right.
Can we get that on the plan, sir?
Yes, can you please add that to the plan, please, to make sure that, that it's, that it's real here?
Yep.
Please, thank you.
It's going to be part of a resolution, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
What, what you're referring to in your hand, is that a survey, or is it?
No, it's pictures I took this morning.
Okay, so you'll get that to, through your attorney, to Mr. Karas?
Five, certainly.
Can you once again repeat your address?
508 Main Street.
508 Main Street, okay. We'll have to make sure that that makes it into a resolution, and also on to the application drawings, okay?
I'll double-check the survey, but I, there was nothing that I recall in the survey, I'm just, I'll double-check on it, if there is anything that would be reflected in the survey.
Anyone else in the public would like to ask any questions? No? Okay, thank you. All right, we have about, less than 10 minutes, is there anyone that's going to be quick? No? Okay. All right, then, what's the next potential? No, we will, we definitely know the next potential date.
There will be revised plans submitted.
Yeah, we're going to need revised plans submitted, we have at least, we have at least five different items that have to be added to the plan, so. How far out can we?
So we are looking at.
Just a second, the meeting is still in progress, please. We would be looking at June, June 5th, potentially? All right, so June 5th, we need at least five different items that I have on my list of modifications to the plan.
What I want to do, I'm just, I'll check, June 5th is fine.
June 5th? Okay?
All right, the five items, why don't we just go through those?
I have, at least, I have at least five, I don't know if anybody else has more, but I have at least five. We're going to add the, the green, green roof plantings, the actual plantings are going to go into the plan as opposed to into the stormwater where it is. That's going to go in there, the, the drainage on the roof, on the green roof, with the 20 inches versus the 16 inches, the walkway elevation within the same thing, we're going to have the phasing plan, we're going to have a signage plan, we're going to have the sewer line added to the drawings. Those are, that's what I have, I don't know if anybody else had anything else that they wanted, speak now.
What about, you know, let's talk about not being happy with having the one we were sent up.
I'm, I am still not happy, but.
There was also a discussion about swapping out species of plants along the street.
Yes, yeah, so we could have that, that could be added also, so I'll put that into next time.
It'll also need to be submitted by May 15.
Okay.
Downstairs.
Right. I still, you know, the, the side of the, the building that's facing east, why that has to be on the lot line is, I don't understand, but I guess that we'll have that discussion again. Because full, 99% coverage is way too much, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, so we have, can I get a motion to carry this application to June 5th, June 5th without further notice?
Okay, Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Galloppo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shunamayo?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Michael Gunnan?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kozak.
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you, have a good night.
Jeff, should you need a approval from him to, so we don't run into a time problem?
Yeah.
All right, hang on, Mr. Karas?
Mr. Karas, could you just provide a certification of the extension of time?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess, please? All in favor?
All right.
And I will now take.
Hello?
Hello? I will now take roll call, so we can get back into the meeting.
Let's get back.
James Banano?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Galloppo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Daniel Shunamayo?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Michael Gunnan?
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kozak.
Here. The next application is 637 and 701 Lake Avenue.
Okay, good evening, Steve Goen from Lofer, Giordano Halloran and Cecil, on behalf of the applicant, the applicant is the owner of the property, that is Jamal's National Guard Armory LLC, that LLC is an affiliate of Douglas Development Corporation, based in Washington DC. With me tonight, I do have Paul Milstein as a representative of the applicant, he is a principal of Douglas Development and also the director of development redevelopment. So the proposal today is.
Just one, just one moment, before we continue, we have something that we want to disclose.
Okay.
And to understand that if your applicant is okay or not, based on some interactions, I know that there are other, there's another application that is going on in the city with this developer.
Correct.
And there have been numerous discussions with one of our board members about that application with this developer.
So I am a direct neighbor of 1201 Memorial Drive, which is the subject of redevelopment area plan, and will be the subject of future applications before this board, from which I will be recused. So we just want to make sure you know that, I, you know, I know Paul, and just to make sure you're comfortable with me continuing to hear this application.
Oh, understood, and we are comfortable, yes.
If you're okay with it, then we just wanted to close, disclose it, and if you are, then let's move on.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. So the building, I'm sure everybody is familiar with the building that we're going to talk about tonight, it's the VFW building on Lake Avenue, Jim, turn, oh, you got the thing. So the proposal tonight is to rehabilitate that building with a 24-unit multifamily building and a parking lot located across Bond Street. We're asking for preliminary and final major site plan, and there is a bulk variance associated with this, which Mr. Kennedy to my right is going to testify to. I do have the full team tonight, so I have Jim Kennedy, who's our professional engineer, I have Paul Milstein, who I mentioned, Jason Hanahan, who is project designer from Mode Architects, I have Gary Dean, our traffic consultant, I have Christine, Christine Goffe, our professional planner, and I also have Kim Day leader, who is an affiliate of Traceries, and she's a historic preservation consultant. We did get two.
And you know we go home at 10:00.
I know that, so I was just getting to that part of it. So we did get two review letters, we got one dated April 13th from Insight Engineering, and we got another dated April 14th from Clark Aitken Hins. There's a number of comments in those review letters, for the most part, with the insight letter, we can comply with all of the engineering recommendations, and we will, a number of design considerations in the CCH letter that we're going to have to pay some attention to, one of the comments in that letter was that we meet with the DRC, which we intend to do. So what I'd like to do is, with this hearing, since we had everybody coming tonight, including people from out of town, we're going to put on as much as we can, we'd like to get as much feedback as we can from the board, for understanding that we're going to come back, and we'd like to meet with the development review committee, work through some of the architectural design issues and some other things, so we'll do as much as we can, as much as we want to get into, and then we'll come back again.
I'm sorry, did you say one of the principals' names is Milstein?
Yes.
Is that any relation to Milstein Brothers or Ogden Capital in New York City?
Unfortunately not.
More fortunately.
So I'll let, I'll let Mr. Kennedy get into a little bit, but basically, the, Douglas has owned this site for a number of years, purchased it from the VFW organization, and at one time had approached the city with a proposal to redevelop both 637 and 701, it was a much more robust residential development, there was going to be about 60 units, it was going to be two residential buildings over, over parking on the, on the ground floor. Ultimately, through conversations with the city, it was determined that the city would like to preserve the actual VFW building itself, and so that's the application we have here today, is to rehabilitate that building and keep the existing parking lot. So to start with the presentation, I'll introduce my professional engineer, Jim Kennedy.
Before we start with that, just for the record, we do have jurisdiction to hear the matter, notices are appropriate.
Thank you. Oh, that's always good. So now I'll introduce Mr. Kennedy, we can have. So now I'll introduce Mr. Kennedy, we can have him sworn in.
Mr. Kennedy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, just state your name and spell your last words.
James Kennedy, K E N N E D Y. Business address is 211 Maple Avenue in Red Bank.
And Mr. Kennedy, if you could provide for the board your professional qualifications as a professional engineer?
I'm a Lehigh University graduate with a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey for the past 26 years. I've been expected, accepted as an expert in the Superior Court of New Jersey, as well as most of the municipalities in Monmouth County, except Asbury is one of my holdouts, and I'm so happy to be here. Asbury, I've always lived very close by, and I have very fond memories of growing up and going to the boardwalk and the carousel with my grandma, so.
And everything you have is up current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good. So Jim, let's just make sure that we're plugged in here, and let's take the board first through the existing conditions, and then you can get into the civil design aspects.
Sure.
And counsel, do we mark this? This is the site plan that was submitted, so.
As long as it's been submitted, it's up to you, we can mark it, we don't necessarily.
That was part of, it was part of the application, so that's fine.
Okay, I'm actually gonna skip over to the rendering.
This one we have to mark. So this one, this one we can mark A1.
This was submitted, I believe, to the city as part of the application. As Steve indicated, there's two lots associated with their proposed development. One is, we're gonna call Lot 1, which is 701 Lake Avenue, it's a colored one, located on the left of the exhibit. This is a 15,700 square feet parcel in the CBD mixed zone. To the right, which is the existing parking lot, this is Lot 11, two separate blocks, but just to shorten it, Lot 1 on the left, Lot 11 on the right. Lot 1 is going to be the beginning of my focus, and we're gonna talk about existing conditions. The existing conditions of this lot is, well, it's the VFW lot, the armory before that. There's a 37.4-foot setback from Bond Street to the closest point of the building. If we measure it to the concrete curb, which is really what you see when you're out there, it's about 50 feet from the curb to the closest point of the building. On Lake Avenue, in this area, the closest point of the building is 12 feet from the Lake Avenue setback. Again, if we measure it to the concrete curb line, it's about 32 feet to the curb line along Lake Avenue. Along, this is labeled as 15-foot wide alley, it does appear on maps as Mayfair. So Mayfair has a 0-foot setback existing today. All of these setbacks are existing today and are proposed to remain. To the rear alley, which is the unnamed alley, to the north, I keep calling it the North Alley, it's a 10-foot wide alley, and there's a 2.2-foot setback in that, from our building to the alley line. The pervious portions of the property make up 76.7% of the lot. I'm sure, as you know by driving by, there's grassed areas along the corner of Bond and Lake. There's another landscaped area between a lower ramp to the first floor of the structure and adjacent to the main stairway into the front of the building, the lake frontage. On the Bond Street side, I'm gonna now go over to the existing aerial, because this is showing proposed, I wanna show you what's there today. So, in this portion, there is an existing tandem parking stall with a pedestrian stairway into the side of the building. For a long time, there was an aluminum ramp or a metal ramp system that ran from that top landing down perpendicular to Bond Street. That ramp has been, in this aerial, it's been demolished. Quite a bit of interior work was done to secure the structure, and that's, you see the remnants of that work going on in the aerial. Existing conditions, like I said, there's a pervious portion along the corner of Bond and Lake, as well as the pervious portion adjacent to the ramp to the first floor of the structure.
Do we have to label this also? That's a big one, because this was not included in the submission.
This wasn't part of the submission?
No.
That's fine, we can label that A2.
We can label this A2, this is just an aerial?
Yeah, it's actually the same aerial that's located on the front cover of the plans from my recollection there. So, and I just do want to point out, right, it's March 18th. Actually, this is the latest aerial from near map dated March 18th, so this aerial map is only about a month old. It was taken, like I said, about a month ago. So, and just zooming out a little bit, if I can figure that out. Drainage from this site does flow into the stormwater system along Bond and Lake, and eventually flows into Wellesley Lake, which is diagonally across. One of the comments or questions was the closest hydrants. There are two fire hydrants, one at the intersection of Lake, it's actually just diagonal from us, about 145 feet away, and the other is at Main and Lake, about 150 feet away from the building. There is a fake hydrant, which through our surveyor, over here in the courtyard, it's a red hydrant, but if you walk over to it and shake it, it's not connected to anything, it's just decorative. I think it's more for the dogs than for anyone else. But it does call out on our survey as a hydrant, that's wrong, and we'll take it off and have, oh no, indicating that it's a decorative hydrant. Just with regard to Lot 11, there is a wall, a retaining wall, that is along Lake Avenue and does turn the corner into Bond, we'll discuss that later. The wall does pick up a little bit further along Bond to the north. This is the old Tom McCann Building. This is generally a mix of, mostly commercial with a mix of residential. I believe there's one structure with residential across, obviously Cookman is right to the north here. So these, in this alley, it's the rear of the Cookman buildings. So what you see there is there's refuse dumpsters from the commercial, there's utilities. The power comes in from that back alley, gas meters, there's water meters. That utility alley is there, it's open, you can actually walk through it. I'm not sure if a large truck could do it, but probably a small car could go through that alley. But it's basically a service alley used for, like I said, utilities and for loading and kind of dumpsters and utilities for the commercial structure. We actually are not using that alley as part of our proposed development, there's no need. Some of the utility connections may wind up coming from there, but there's no active use of that alley. Who owns the alleys, is there share? It's the city of. It's the city? It's the city. These are right on the tax maps, and they're right of ways, even though they're not meeting any sort of standard, they're just old alleys. And likely to provide exactly the fire egress from the back of stores, kind of thing. Same thing with Mayfair, this is the Corbo Building, restaurant supply, used to be a restaurant supply at the corner. And this is Mayfair, which has a varying width, and you can see again that this is used for loading and utilities and that sort of thing. Okay, so the existing improvements, it is a three-story structure of about 18,394 square feet. I went over the existing ingress and egress, one was from the east side with a monument-type stair located where the cursor is on the Bond side, and actually a pretty architecturally interesting staircase. I guess I should say. Bless you. I guess I should say engineering interesting, but I'll say architectural. I like the stair that comes out to Lake, and that is proposed to be preserved as part of the application. In proposed conditions, well, actually, I won't go there yet, I'll stay on existing conditions. One of the things that we did before we even came to the city was we went to the DEP first. Because of its proximity to the lake, we knew that there's a potential for flood hazard area associated with Wesley Lake. So we went to DEP and we applied for not only a flood hazard verification, but also a, an individual permit to permit the conversion of the commercial building into residential. As part of that, they indicated, and they agreed, I'll say, that the flood hazard line is associated with elevation 11 on the property. This is important because it comes to play into our variance relief. This flood hazard area, which, uh-oh, it's indicated by the FHA line, and I'm on sheet two of the submitted plans, that FHA line follows the 11 contour throughout the entirety of the site. And keeps continuing on, so anything.
When did you go to DEP?
So the permit was issued in October of 2022, so just this past fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome. However, the issue comes up is that this flood hazard line touches the building. So when the flood hazard line touches the building, they put certain restrictions on the structure itself for residential purposes. One is a dry floodproofing requirement of any windows below that elevation 11. The second, which is a special condition of the permit, is that no use of the first floor is permitted. No residential, no commercial, and that's special condition two of our FHA individual permit that was submitted to the city and is filed now in the Monmouth County. So that precludes our ability to place a commercial or residential use on the first floor of the structure. They indicated to us that the floor, starting at 17.88 feet, which is where these stairs go, 17.88 feet, is the lowest occupiable floor of the structure. We were not necessarily happy with that, but it is something that is restrictive now. It's filed in the county, and this applicant really has no ability to place a commercial use or any use, for that matter, on the ground floor. So that's. So that's the level of the second floor then? That's what we think is the second floor, right. The existing second floor. Correct. The first. You say any use, not even parking?
Only storage is permitted.
I'm sorry?
Only storage.
Correct. So that first floor is not occupiable, and that is the variance relief that we are for this board for. We have, we have, honestly, it's a hardship, right? Because we have an outside agency telling us we can't use the floor, and we have the city indicating that we have to use the floor for up to, you know, 35% commercial. So we have a professional planner, we'll go into all of the details of this, but I just wanted to lay the foundation of how we got here and why we're requesting relief in this, for this, for this one thing, in fact. So I do want to go back to our rendering now and just discuss the very intricate civil engineering portions of this property, which is really not that much. The architect shoulders the load in this presentation, and I'm just gonna go through what we propose. We need to, and we're required to, provide an accessible route from a accessible parking space to the finished floor of the structure. The finished floor of the structure is several feet above the parking lot. There's an existing parking lot in this location now, where it appears that tandem parking for the VFW used to occur. We are reducing that tandem depth and reducing it to simply two accessible parking stalls. One van accessible and one that's not van accessible, but shares the same access aisle. We also have a barrier-free compliant ramp that provides access to the landing outside the finished floor of the Easterly entrance. That landing doesn't exist today. The stairs on the Easterly side of the building go right to the door with hardly any landing whatsoever. So in order for this to work from barrier-free perspective, and actually from an egress perspective, a landing is being constructed outside the door, and the stairway is pushing slightly towards Bond Street to allow a proper landing with pullside clearance to the door, with turning maneuvers, and generally, a safe means of egress from the doorway. So this is really the change from an engineering perspective of what we're doing. We're, again, we're removing the tandem depth, we're reconstructing code-compliant, barrier-free parking spaces, we're providing an accessible ramp, a new landing at the doorway, and stairs down to generally follow where the old stairs went. This is, you know, the intent is to provide safe, accessible means of ingress and egress to those that are not able-bodied, and this is the way we do it. One of the comments was to look at providing access along Bond Street and to perhaps create a green area here, or maybe keep the ramp, and provide barrier-free parking along Bond Street. Bond Street has a running grade that actually exceeds the barrier-free standards. The barrier-free standards permit a 2% in any direction turning area in a parking stall. We generally, I don't think anyone wants, you know, to have to cross a curb or a sidewalk for parking, right? If we can avoid it, it's something to be avoided, because not only is there an aesthetic benefit, but there is potentially a safety benefit of not crossing a sidewalk. However, in this case, there's a balance, just, that's your job to balance these things. Balancing the safety of those that need accessible parking with a pretty common occurrence of cars backing out of a driveway through a sidewalk. In fact, it's an existing condition where tandem cars had backed out over the sidewalk. In my expert, in my engineering opinion, I think this on balance is better, to provide two compliance stalls than stalls within the street that would not be compliant. We are gonna meet with the design committee, but I did want to put that on the record, and perhaps, I'll say some, you know, some commentary from the board, but, or maybe from your design professionals, because if these parking stalls don't work here, there's very few areas that we can provide barrier-free compliant parking stalls. If we provide.
Question?
Sure, of course.
Have you thought about using a lift instead of a ramp? Because while I don't love crossing the sidewalk, I do understand the need to be close to the building. But my big concern is that you have an 18-foot length, and I mean, that's if they park at the very end of the space, and if the cars are parked, they have a van, have a van, simple van, we're only 18 feet, and now we're on the sidewalk.
So we actually have the two-foot section behind the property line before the sidewalk starts. So the barrier-free code actually requires a 20-foot stall length, and that's what we are providing, although we dimensioned it to the property line.
Does it need to be on your property?
Well.
Not in the right of way?
Well, I think it was the common, okay, so we can do that. We can push it all forward, we can trade it, and that's fine, if you want a 20-foot stall within the property line, making a 24-foot stall, you know, to the concrete sidewalk. That's something we can certainly do. Providing a lift within the required means of egress is, I'm sure the architect will echo, my thoughts is not permitted. In very few instances are you allowed to provide a lift for a fire egress, because the lift generally requires power and someone to operate.
Sure as you can get an elevator.
Sorry?
Sure as you can get an elevator.
Correct, and it becomes certainly more critical if you don't have the accessibility. So, anyway, so yes, this can be pushed forward if necessary. Again, that might be one of the details we discuss at the development review committee level. We are proposing one light in this location to light not only the parking stalls, but also the ramp system, as well as the pathway, the egress discharge pathway to the sidewalk. Are the landings at the turners in the way? Absolutely, yeah, we have to have at every turning, at every portion of turning, you have to have a 5x5, 2% maximum turning area.
Is that alleyway wide enough that the handicap spots would come off the alley instead of off the Bond Street?
You know, we looked at that as well, but we can't get a turning movement, because it's only 10 feet.
What about the alley?
Mr. Kennedy, before you move in. Yes, sir. Relationship to the question just asked about the alleyway. That alleyway was discussed in prior approvals by this board when both the building on the corner of Cookman and the alleyway to the west, and also when Upstage came before this board. And I don't recall what the restrictions were, but they're.
but there was a discussion and the approvals were contingent upon, uh, some activities in that alleyway. And I don't remember whether it was simply, uh, that they had to be, the alleyway had to be maintained in a passable condition. But I do recall that, uh, there were some, uh, requirements at the time that those prior approvals were granted. And I would suggest that you, uh, get a hold of those approvals and see what restrictions, if any, were, uh, uh, on that alleyway and the use of it.
We can do that. Sure.
Then the the second light fixture is merely above the, um, doorway into the the first, uh, floor or ground level of the structure. Um, the-
Can you go back to the handicap thing?
Sure.
So I I know this thing on an angle, but not like perpendicular straight in. So is that how you get the light, so?
No, well-
You know, since eighteen, that's on the long leg, right?
It's it's a perpendicular to the street.
Exactly. So if I did, if I did, first of all, there's a utility pole right here. So if I did square them and make them perpendicular to the ramp, uh, they would actually lengthen because they rotate about this point right here. Um, and then as you rotate them, they actually get get longer, not shorter.
So it's straight in the street?
Yes, it's perpendicular. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so with respect to landscaping, um, we propose a, and I and I know that the professionals have some comments on, uh, the types of planting that we're proposing and and certainly we'll talk about, uh, changing species. The intent is to provide, there already are, uh, existing street trees along Lake Avenue and and Bond as well. But it's to supplement the landscaping in the pervious areas. We're proposing two additional shade trees, four ornamental trees, uh, two evergreens and about eighty-five, uh, different shrubs, uh, with landscaping, plus perennials, grasses, that kind of thing. Um, the intent is to, um, be in harmony with the architectural feature of the building and not to cover it up, but to, um, but but to, uh, I guess, kind of complete it or or just help it. Um, that is, and and I'm not, I know that we're going to come back and I know that, uh, after we meet with your design professionals, there's going to be changes to the plans. So I didn't, I I don't know if you want me to go through the letters now because I intend on trying to satisfy all of the comments by the time we get here next time.
So what happens to the westernly access to the ground floor?
Here?
Was that just a concrete bed notice or?
That is, that is a a ramp and, uh, there'll be testimony with regards to what that lower floor can be used. And I'll, I guess I'll take the wind out of the sails and tell you that there's going to be refuse and, um, recycling in the lower-level interior and that that rampway will still provide access for unloading those materials.
So is it curb cut there or curb cut there?
Yes. Yeah, it's just, it comes all the way out, uh, to Lake.
Could that, uh, area that you've just described be used for parking? Would the, would that, uh, uh, validate the permit that you have or or could parking be considered, uh, storage? Uh, if I recall, that's a pretty substantial area under there. You could probably put, uh, I'm just guessing, maybe a half a dozen cars under there without too much of a problem.
So I-
You're talking about the ground floor that's restricted?
Yes, I'm talking about the ground floor.
Good. Go ahead.
So, and I don't want to step again on the architectural, uh, on the architect's, uh, feet, but that is a whole different, um, fire rating. When you have parking under, and it's an existing building, parking under with residential above, that would make, um, some really substantial changes to the structure in order to make that happen.
I I question that because the use of that structure, uh, excuse me, historically was an armory and they used to have heavy equipment in there, uh, tanks, trucks, uh, and that type of equipment. And there was also a firing range under there. Now, there was no, uh, residential use up above except, well, okay.
There was no residential.
Well, that is the trigger, that that residential use where people are sleeping. That's that's the issue and and certainly codes or certainly-
I I'm just asking a question, I'm not-
Look, if I could, if that would fix things, I I would, I would jump at it. Uh, this is a ramped area, even parking within the ramped area, uh, wouldn't, wouldn't work because you'd have to back out onto Lake Avenue.
Or turn around inside the building. It has plenty of room back there.
No, no, it's, you're right. I know the building is big, but would, I'm not sure. We'll get to it later. But wouldn't DEP say like, it's the same thing with five forty-five? Like, hey, you can't park in a flood zone and so I'm sure you looked at it.
It's a different threshold-
Right.
For that, but, you know, their their point here is more a question of, um, yeah, the, and it doesn't solve the accessibility problem. The finished floor of the upper level is so high up, you can't get, you know, you're not allowed to use the powered lift to satisfy the fire code. So you need a ramp. And there's just not enough length to get a ramp up toward on the lake side. I understand the, you know, the mechanics of why, why we're choosing Bond. It's just, you know, we we have rules in the city. They're new as part of our master plan reexam to to limit things like parking in front yards and use, you know, crossing sidewalks, backing out into the street over the sidewalk. So, you know, we're just, it's the puzzle we gotta, we gotta figure.
Right. And and we're gonna hopefully partner with you to try to figure out the best, best way forward because we want, you know, certainly we want the the best, best project in the end, right? That's why we're all spending time doing this.
Just one other question before we leave this.
Yes, sir.
Is the the first floor, I'm sorry, the second floor, uh, the elevation of the second floor the same from both entrances, the, uh, Bond Street and the, uh, Lake?
Almost. Seventeen point eight eight at one side and eighteen point like change in the other. You know, some, some-
One, one step?
Old building kind of thing. I don't think it's a step. I think it's more of a sloped floor, an older floor.
Uh, would it be possible to bring your ramp from where you have your parking, uh, your handicap parking now down to the, uh, uh, other, to Lake Avenue stairs and come in from the side? I think your slopes might be a little bit better and, uh, it might not be much longer. But it it might, uh, if I recall, there's a landing on that. The steps come up from either side and then, uh, go up again to a landing. And you may be able to come in directly to that landing from the, uh, if you leave that, come down, uh, Bond, make a turn and up to that landing.
Yes. So so what you're suggesting is that we ramp from the spaces across, down, and then over?
Yes. Uh, if I don't, I I didn't, you know, I didn't look at the distances. I don't know if it's practical, whether it could even be done, but I might say-
It just becomes a much more intrusive element with the architecture and there's windows all through that side. So while technically it might, again, this is a balance, but technically it may be possible, it might not be the right solution for this site.
You'd be losing all the air space because you're decreasing the inverters coverage, right?
That's correct. We're going from seventy-six point seven percent to seventy-four point eight percent.
And that might make your wind pretty small.
Of course, yeah.
Just a thought.
A good one. So, uh, I, that was all that I was going to present. I wanted to lay the foundation for a couple of things and I know that we're going to get into the details of this after I meet with the Design Review Committee. I just don't want to take up the board's time and then have to repeat and change my testimony next time.
Well, if you're representing the engineering portion of this, right? If you're representing the engineering portion, I don't know, I mean, we can go through the letter, the engineering letter if you're-
So what I would, I'm going to meet with Jason about that letter and I'm going to try and resolve almost every single one.
That's that we would do here.
We can do it now.
If we can go through every one and say, all right, are we in, are we out? Because then we can be done with engineering.
We're here.
Because then, then at least you have that out of the way. Is that all right?
Yep.
Are you okay with that?
We're good.
All right, let's go.
Okay, so under Site Plan Completeness Review, um, we agree to provide all the additional information?
Yeah, so, so Jim, we'll, we'll, when we do this, at least we'll stipulate one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, we will accommodate all of those on revised plans. True?
Okay.
Yes, uh, but the color rendering is now provided, which is number ten.
Got it.
And number eight, the phasing plan? The applicant does not propose phasing. It's an existing building. They're going to do this in one shot.
Okay, where are you going to stage?
Yeah, we're going to stage everything.
I believe it's already staged in the loading area here.
So you will not be using the parking lot across the way for staging? Or is that somebody else's discussion?
Yeah, we, I'm gonna, uh, Mr. Milstein can come up next, he can speak to that.
Okay. All right, we just want, we'd like to know what the uses of, you know, what if, what can we expect during construction?
Okay, understood.
And that would include never closing Bond?
Eleven is-
That would include never closing Bond.
Right.
Or Lake.
Understood.
During that process.
Well, we can agree to that.
Okay. All right, let's keep going.
Eleven is the architect.
Okay.
Twelve is the planner.
Okay.
Going to thirteen, uh, that's, uh, deferring to the board planner. Fourteen is the architect. Fifteen, uh, the architect will also discuss this, but the, um, this wall is to be refaced and a decorative fence is to be added above, uh, the wall. So this is the existing wall that's located along Lake Avenue, along Lot eleven.
So just for your indication, the fence rights say fences above retaining walls need to be set at five feet. That may constrain the, or a variance must be read.
Okay. Well, it's an existing-
The wall's existing.
Right.
The fence is.
So we're, we're trying to to balance again.
Just be prepared for, if you need to address that as part of a variance or exception.
Okay.
Would you, would you be the ultimate, I suppose, answer to which any was, if I'm a tenant?
Well, like-
We're all preference?
If they had to set the fence back to be compliant, they may not be able to have as many parking spaces or the arrangement of parking spaces that they're currently-
So for even those retaining walls?
It's got to be five feet off.
Oh, yeah. Even though it was not retaining walls?
They're, they're not going to be able to not have a retaining wall. The grade between where the surface of the parking is and the sidewalk is like three feet. No worries. They're not cutting that out.
And it is a a three-foot setback now, the wall to the property line. Three, yeah, three feet. And the the public sidewalk is within that three-foot area.
Are, are we going to be going over this, what's going to happen to this parking area also? Is someone else going to do that?
Well-
While we're at it? Because we haven't even had, we haven't had that discussion at all.
Sure, we can talk about that now. Um, it's a, it's a relatively simple answer, but Jim, do you want to get into what's happening with the parking lot?
Parking is never simple.
Well-
Let's just say that.
Wait, wait, you hear what you've asked to say?
Well, the the flood hazard line goes through the parking area. We're very limited in what we can actually physically do in the parking lot.
Okay.
If we raise the elevation or change any of the, uh, any of the structure, um, we're, we're in violation of the flood hazard, uh, individual permit. So what we had proposed, which, um, we now have to discuss a little bit further, is to provide, um, a refacing of the existing wall, which the existing wall doesn't look great. And then the fence that is on the adjacent property is a decorative aluminum fence. I personally liked it. I thought that that would be a good idea to carry it across on the, uh-oh. There we go. Um, carried across, but the architect also has a detail on his plan as to what, um, fencing would go across the wall. If there's variance relief associated with that, your planner doesn't know it because she hasn't seen it yet. Uh, but that was the idea, to to try and meet your screening and buffering uh, and not impact the number of parking stalls that are in the existing lot. There's twenty-seven. We'd like to keep twenty-seven. Um, our traffic engineer is here as well. He has some ideas of potentially increasing the number of stalls, um, but-
Well, he, he's Harry U. Dean.
Yeah. Or Gary Dean.
It's close.
Are we, is there, is there any kind of flow that shows us what's going to happen? Do we have a layout of what the parking lot's going to be? In our package or this is it?
This was it. Uh, we proposed to keep the same alignment.
So you're in and out on two, you have two in and out? Two, two driveways?
In on Lake and Bond has two accesses as well.
And do you need them?
Well, with this layout, we do, uh, because there's no, if we eliminate any of them, then we're creating dead-end spaces that, uh, that don't work.
You don't, you don't end up with anything more.
So leave-
Can you get up, cut out the one on Lake? It wouldn't add any more spaces because they're in the corners.
Yeah.
I'd be giving them a curb cut on that, you had three on the street parking spots.
You know, we'll look at that. We'll, we'll look at that, um, potential and either I, when I come back, or the, uh, traffic engineer, when he comes back, will present the best-case scenario for the lot.
Great. Do you really need three? And if you don't need three and you need two, what's the best way to do it? Obviously, we want you to have as many parking spaces as you possibly can get. And if you can help the street parking, even better.
Okay.
Okay? So if we can gain anything by by losing any of the curb cuts, that's great.
Okay. Uh, there are three existing light fixtures in the lot. Uh, they do not conform to really anything. Um, so what I want to do is take a look at those light fixtures and see if there's something that we can do that will be dark sky compliant, be more uniform and maybe a little more energy efficient as well. Uh, there's a little, it's not as simple as all that because they're hooked up to existing, to other people's buildings. So we have to make sure that, uh, we have ownership and that we have, uh, the ability to, to, to trade out those fixtures without infringing on someone else's rights. Um, so-
You mean they're attached to all the building?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Um, and you know, it was VFW, so a lot of handshakes, you know, right? I mean, that's probably how they get attached. Uh, but we have a different, um, different order. So we have to make sure that we have a little more formalized agreements. Um, there is some, uh, asphalt repair that is proposed, uh, to make the parking lot safe. And those were really the, the limits of what, uh, was happening with this lot. Uh, two signs, resident parking only, uh, just to provide for some, uh, parking control.
EV?
Uh, EV, one of the barrier-free stalls would be EV and, uh, I believe one stall in the existing parking lot would be, uh, EV as well.
Was that noted in the, in the reports? So I don't remember seeing it, but I don't know.
I think that was a comment, that was a comment in one of the reports, yeah, and we were going to indicate that we would have to comply. I I think that, you know, and and Jim can corroborate this for me. Um, you know, this was, the proposal was to leave it alone. Basically, after reviewing the reports, we know we're going to have to work on the parking lot design a little bit. Um, in fact, I think what I, I I think what I have planned to do after, uh, Mr. Kennedy testifies, um, probably not have, uh, Gary Dean, our traffic expert, testify until we have a chance to work with the board's professionals, come up with a little bit of a more refined design for the parking lot and then we can come back and talk about that. Um, because we have a couple, we have a few items to work on. Lighting, uh, fencing, retaining walls, striping. So we can deal with all, all that when we come back. NEV.
So just back on on Jason's letter, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, fifteen, uh, that was the discussion of the wall. And I know that now we might need some relief for the fence on the wall unless we can come up with something else.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen is lighting. I actually just covered a bunch of the lighting, but there's some detail-
There's gaps, there's gaps. We need, we need a lighting plan of some sort.
And and we certainly have a, a lighting plan, uh, actually, um, for the, for the proposed. Sorry. There's got to be a better way to do this, but I don't know how it is, so I don't want to mess anything up. Anyway, we, we did submit a lighting plan. Oh, this is, nope, that's great.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't see a lighting plan. That's, that's, we, we need some sort of a lighting plan on-
All right, this is the lighting plan, um, that was submitted. Each of the foot candle measurements are shown, uh, with this one fixture. Uh, there is no lighting plan for Lot eleven, the parking area, because at that point, we're going to keep the existing lights and we don't change. If we are changing the lights, we, we certainly will- If we are changing the lights, we certainly will provide a lighting plan for that as well.
So, so-
That is also, the photo measures are shown for that as well.
So wait a second, so 4 of 9, that's where we are, right?
Uh-
On 4 of 9?
6.
Which one are we on?
6 of 9. Sheet 6 of 9.
6 of 9. Yeah, I get you. All right, 6 of 9. So, sorry, I thought this was, so this is our plantings and lighting?
Yes.
Okay.
So it has the lighting details, all of the statistics in both grids. Here's the shop cut for the LSI fixture. Here's the shop cut for, it's called a football wall pack. It's dark sky compliant. There's no upward, nothing above 90 degrees. Same thing with the LSI. It's dark sky compliant, 100% cutoff.
And what are the color fixtures?
Right now, they're at 3,000. We understand you have a 2,700, so we have to change the LED or switch, switch the fixture to comply with the 2,700.
So if I'm looking at 6 of 9, all the way on the left-hand side, when you're actually looking at probably around where that, that ramp down is, you're at 2.1, which is way over any kind of spillage, or am I not reading that right?
It's a 2.1 foot candle within the ramp.
That's spillage, correct?
The alley is 0.4.
Yeah, the alley, which is off-site, is 0.4, 0.1, and 0.
The alley is, but that's 2.1?
2.1 is just beneath the fixture, 1.8 and 2.1.
So within that little driveway there.
It's on there properly.
Right.
And is there lighting on that staircase along Lake Avenue, or that big dark?
This has existed.
It's existing.
Existing lighting.
Okay, what's the, what are the numbers there? Because I, there's nothing that I, it's just, I'm sorry, it's just hard for me to read because there's a lot of, there's a lot going on here.
Okay.
So, so where's the lighting?
You know, the, the pattern of light, particularly like on the ramp, I'm sorry, not on the ramp.
Oh, so candles?
Yeah, so, you know, we want to see that pattern.
Not a problem.
Yes.
You know, it might help is separating lamps.
Yeah, that would, that would help to separate the 2, then we can see it.
Underneath.
And that would also include existing lighting, because I want, I'd like to see what, what that even is.
Okay.
So whatever's on that stairway.
Okay.
The entryway.
All right, so we'll provide a lighting plan of-
Yeah, you just, just separate.
Understood.
And what's existing also.
Not a problem.
Okay.
So I think that covers 16.
That's right.
And then 17, that's the service letters, and we'll provide those. It's an existing building with all existing utilities, but we'll provide the service letters. The pavement repair number 18, that's fine, we'll provide that. 19, we'll provide that. 20, we'll provide it. 21 is testimony by the owner's representative or the architect. 22, this is, well, it's informational. The rooftop stormwater is actually existing. The roof leaders all go into ground, underground pipes at the back alley, and that's proposed to be continued. 23-
Just one second.
Sorry.
So you're, there's going to be a reduction of impervious?
Yes, that's correct. 306 square feet.
Which you should take credit for that. It's a good thing.
Well, it's 306 square feet.
It's a really good thing.
And we have a report that goes through it. It's a change in volume.
I'm just saying.
It is.
Okay.
Can we offset with that with lighting?
Sorry, no.
Don't push your luck. We just got one call.
One more. I love the impervious.
Okay, 23 is the parking stalls, and like I testified, either I or our traffic consultant will come back with that plan. 24 is an existing condition. This, again, is having to do with Lot 11 and some of the dimensions of the parking stalls. Same thing with 25. That's an existing condition, again, with the existing parking stalls, and will be addressed in a different plan. 26, this is the sidewalk issue with the barrier-free parking stalls. I think this is, it's a better alternative, where we're providing accessible parking, and the, that's the benefit. The cost of that is that we do have to violate ordinance where the car is back over the sidewalk. I don't think that's anything new, but I know it's something that the city's trying to dissuade. 27, that's fine, we'll provide. 28 is an existing condition, but we'll provide those dimensions. 29, the parking area is all impervious. It's an existing condition at 0%. 30, it's, again, an existing condition. There are no buffers. 31, we don't provide wheel stops because of the tripping hazards associated with them, but we will provide, and it's shown on the plans, bollards at the front of the barrier-free stalls, and the barrier-free parking sign is extending on top of the decorative bollard.
Why don't you provide wheel stops?
Wheel stops are recognized as tripping hazards. Every ASTM, ANSI, every standard organization that I know of suggests elimination of wheel stops because they're low-level hazards to people walking.
I disagree with you, but as part of the city ordinance, any parking lot has to have wheel stops.
So hopefully, there's an alternative for bollards as well.
Okay.
Bollards are the standard of practice. If you think Wawa, Quick Check, any pedestrian-heavy parking lot, there are no wheel stops. There are bollards that extend up at least 30 inches so that people can see them.
So you told me about the old parking spaces, not just the handycaps?
No, we suggested that we provide concrete wheel stops at the barrier-free stalls.
So, okay, so you said like-
But they're not tripping hazards there?
Just that the handycaps-
Correct.
But they're not tripping hazards there?
No, he's saying they are.
I don't want wheel stops in the barrier-free.
What?
I don't, I don't want wheel stops at the front of the barrier-free stalls because what happens is, let's say there's a barrier-free stall-
No, he's not.
We propose instead, there's a bollard at the front of each stall, right there.
Of the, of the ADA stalls?
Correct.
Correct.
In the other parking lot, we have wheel stops, like we have today.
And even those, I'd like them gone, but, because there's no purpose to them.
Well, our, if our ordinance says, then-
Understandably.
It is. Right, they don't hit your retaining wall and end up in Lake Avenue.
And go over the wall.
Into the fence.
In the proposed condition-
Across to the sidewalk.
In the proposed condition here for the 2 barrier-free stalls, I think the bollards are a much more reasonable condition. It protects the sign, and it does not introduce a trip hazard within an accessible. Okay, so that, I think, brings us to 32. The parking lot does not have shade trees, and again, it's an existing condition. Any shade trees, unless Gary, their traffic engineer, can come up with an island to place a tree, I don't know that we can provide trees within the existing parking lot without the-
And the goal should be that you should, when you're, when you're putting this together, since you are, see what kind of greenery we can find.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
This has been a problem with other projects. We said, guess what? Eliminate a couple parking spots and go by the ordinance and provide the shade trees, provide, what are you supposed to provide as far as drainage and everything else? So your parking lot may become smaller if we're consistent with what we've done with other applicants. And we just had one at 917 Third where we said, you know, eliminate 2 parking spots and put in some green spaces. I mean, so, you know, we, as much as you're eliminating 360, like, you know, we would like more, especially, that's why I said, he'd be Harry U. Dean to convince me that you can get all these cars in this parking lot without working within the bounds of the city ordinances per se.
Okay, so just looking, I mean, there are 2 striped areas here.
And again, like you said, get all the questions now, so the next time we come back. So, I mean, I'm not saying this is like dead on arrival, but-
Right.
Preparing you for the next meeting.
Totally fair.
Yeah.
And we will look at that when we look at the parking lot design.
Right, I would just, I would just advise that, as the mayor's saying, is, is kind of like that the, just because something is an existing condition, doesn't necessarily mean it has to be there, that it can change, it can be improved.
Kind of the point of our redevelopment designation.
Exactly, exactly.
And if you get rid of one of the curb cuts too, you know, that's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Not to lose the space, you know, because the corner lawn, you know, it looks like you gotta pull in there, well, the corner lawn and like, you know, there, I mean, that could be a green spot too, because it looks like, you know-
It doesn't look like you can fit a car there anyway.
Yeah.
So, so I'm sure that your parking consultant can be imaginative.
We will look at that, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, so 33, I don't think there's any encroachments within the public right-of-way, except what the planner identified as the parking stalls, the 2 barrier-free stalls extending, if we count them 20 feet, that's 2 feet within the right-of-way. If they're at 18 feet, then they're within the property line. So we're going to take a look at that. I don't think there's any other, let's see.
Oh, I think we're going to try not to have anything, except we have them, we will need to get council approval.
Your best not to have it, because council approval is going to cost you a lot of money. So try to do as little as possible.
Fair warning.
For your, for your sake.
Got it.
34, we'll provide that. 35, we can provide the wheel stop detail, but again, we are providing a bollard detail, and that's on the plans. I think that's a better alternative than the wheel stops. I can provide-
Less waivers is better.
I can provide the, I know, but safety is even, even better.
Less waivers are better.
Do you have bollards in the other parking lot too?
No. Well, unless that's what the traffic consultant comes back-
No, I mean, you're okay with the wheel stops and, you know?
Only because they're existing. I'd rather get rid of every single one of them. They're a problem when you plow, there's a-
The ordinance.
You know, here, where they're up against an existing building, that's a little different because you don't have people walking through there. You don't have people walking into the wall. Same thing with the retaining wall. You don't have people walking forward towards the retaining wall. In the instance that you have the barrier-free stalls, you have both people, and even the public, coming up through this area, walking through the stalls. In that case, when you have a wheel stop going across the stall, that's a low-lying hazard that someone might not see. So that's, that's, that's my testimony. 36-
So what about the state, if you liked the parking lot, Chris, okay? So like middle lane there, it seems to be, so what, there's no existing wheel stops there?
Correct.
So it's like in around-
Because people are going to pull through those spaces.
Yeah, in around that area.
36, we provided the ADA signs, but we'll make it clear in the plans. 37, this is the AD accessibility. We provided that testimony. 38, we'll provide. 39, the notes are on the plan, but the existing trees are to remain within the right-of-way. Those are perfectly good shade trees.
Was that, did you say these trees on Lake Avenue were aged and in poor shape or something? I don't know who is planting shade trees in this town. I want to have a face-to-face meeting with them. I think it's worth a discussion with environmental shade tree about what's the potential for those. Again, the ordinance does say where trees are existing, we want a contribution for future replacement, so I think they do need to be assessed. Their wire baskets are still in bindings on them. They're pretty much maxed out to where they're going to be in that, you know, condition that they're in, so by the time they go to construct, you know, and have occupancy, those may be dead.
Okay.
I mean, it's no fault of their own, it's just that we need to, I think that's another one of those things we need to-
40, that, the flood hazard area permit modification, that's, if it has to be done, of course, we'll do that. There is no CAFRA permit requirement because WELSY is non-titled. The DEP treatment works are actually, the flow is only 3,825 gallons per day, and it's actually a net, because you can actually take out the existing sanitary sewer flow. But we don't trigger TWA because we don't meet the thresholds. The outside agency approvals, Monmouth County Planning Board was issued. Freehold soil, we were kind of waiting on to see where we are with the board, and if we need an updated FHA for the number of residential units, then that would be the outside agency approval. 44, my, I thought that the street, the street escape improvements were actually in on Lake, but if there's, there's existing pavers, the tree wells, the streetlights, the receptacles-
There's one streetlight. Cobra heads.
I'm sorry, yes, they're cobra heads, they're not the decorative, not decorative fixtures. But I don't know what else, if it's-
Bike racks.
Bike racks, that would be fine.
Right, so bike racks should be added there?
Yeah.
And whatever existing trash receptacles are there, because there, there are some, should be added to your, to the plan.
Okay. And then 45, that's fine, we'll leave it to the city engineer, and 46, that was informational. Other approvals, Monmouth County Planning Board, a letter of no interest was issued. Freehold soil will apply once we have some final input. There is no CAFRA required. Flood Hazard Act was received. If we have to update, we'll update it. NJDEP Treatment Works Act approval is not applicable because of the flow, and of course, all the other city agencies will apply to and make their appointments.
Were there any other questions of this witness from the planning board? Any questions from our professionals for this witness?
Jim, one comment, just make sure if you can submit these 2 exhibits, because right now, we're all looking electronic.
Sure.
Will do.
Okay, anyone, any public questions of this witness from the public? No? Okay. Next?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to, we can go, I know we've only got a little bit of time left, but let's, let's go to, yeah, let's go with Kim. She can be quick. And we'll pull up the-
Can I drink?
Yeah. Right here, right?
Okay. This is really sensitive.
There you go. Okay. So next for this is-
Hold on, we need to verify and swear.
Okay, gotcha. You swear from testimony you're about to provide, will be the truth, the whole truth, and not for the truth?
Yes.
State your name and spell your last for the record, please.
Kimberly Dayleader, D-A-I-L-E-A-D-E-R.
And so, Kim, can you explain for the board what you do with Douglas Development and how, how you're employed at Traceries?
Sure, of course. I have an undergraduate degree in civil and environmental engineering. I was a structural engineer, and then I got my master's in historic preservation in New York, and I have been at Traceries, which is a historic preservation consulting firm in Washington DC for 10 years now, and for 10 years, I've been working with Douglas Development all around the country in buildings that they do, specifically of preservation, you know, whether or not it's a rehab or a full restoration, it runs the gamut.
So the reason I wanted to have Kim up here, a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to talk about some of the historic preservation aspects of what we're trying to do here. Two, she's coming from a long distance, and we only have a half hour, so if I get through her, that would be a good thing. I do, I would like to qualify Kim as an expert in historic preservation. If she, if the board has any questions as to her qualifications, that's fine. Otherwise, with the explanation, I would hope that you would accept. Thanks. So, Kim, what do you, obviously, we have a rendering up here. We're going to mark this as A3, right? That's what we're up to? So A3 is a, it's actually a series of 3 renderings, so we'll call it, let's call it A3, and it'll just be a series of 3 renderings prepared by mode architects, and this is the proposed condition when it's complete. So looking at this, can you just explain for the board sort of how you collaborated with Douglas and how you thought about the historic preservation of this building?
Sure, of course. So the first thing that I did was review the Ashbury Park Design Guidelines, and then- Um, and then also, I've always taken into account the Secretary of Interior guidelines when rehabilitating a historic structure. Um, and it's my professional opinion that this addition on the top, uh, meets the standards. It is contemporary and discernible from the historic architecture. It is not impacting any character-defining features. The, um, existing roof itself is actually not visible from the most prominent portions of the sidewalks and view sheds. Um, and so while the roof itself would be gone, the parapet is not being impacted. We can see.
Is this something that you're supposed to register?
Yes, it's on the state and it's on the national register, within a historic district. So contributing to the stores.
So what does that do? Is that, that, if you're a state or federal, you have to do something?
No, not necessarily you have to do something. Um, I know that Ashbury Park is trying to get a historic commission possibly, maybe? Talking about it, and if it were a local landmark, then I would be at a preservation board, which is what I usually do. But just because we work so closely with Douglas, anytime they have a historic structure, they wanna make sure that they do it right, and so we usually collaborate with them on that. Uh, but technically, unless you're getting state funds or federal funds, you don't have to follow the Secretary of Interior standards. Correct. And they are not doing, um, tax credits on this building.
And can we also mention, I don't know if this is something that Maria has to do, that this, this rendering is not what we have?
Yeah, that's exactly.
It's not what we have, exactly. But, um.
Three, no? Oh.
These, the, these, these that we just marked as an exhibit might be slightly updated from what you have, which is why we're just showing it as an exhibit. Yes, correct. So, so we will submit these, uh, following the hearing.
And I actually think the changes are an improvement, um, and were part of my request. I think the, the fenestration on the addition needed to be differentiated a little bit more from the historic fenestration of the masonry building. Um, you know, the widened openings makes it look more transparent, uh, makes it look more contemporary than the nineteen fourteen structure below. But as you can see, the parapet is, is set back, it's highlighted. You can, I clearly identify what part of this building is historic and what part is an addition. And most importantly, from my professional opinion, is that it is reversible. You are not taking away any character-defining features. This rooftop addition or added floor, however your zoning sees it, can go in the future if someone wanted to completely restore this building back to what it looked like in nineteen fourteen.
What about the rest of the building, other than the, uh, the proposed addition, uh, the additional story? What about, what are we doing to preserve the rest of the building and the surrounding property?
Right, so I think that one of the most critical things, and I, this came up earlier, is the location of the ramp is actually really, um, works with preservation in the terms that, um, this, oop, yeah. So this elevation here is actually the facade of the building. It has the main stair, it's where you historically entered the structure. It has its historic lobby, although it's been highly altered on the interior. Um, and so by pulling the ramp on this elevation here, while it is an articulated elevation and is significant, it is secondary. So that ramp is on an alteration, a side that's already been altered. This stair had that large ramp on it at one point. Um, so the, the alteration on this elevation also meets the standards, because it takes press, the priority of the highly articulated facade and takes more important value to that. So you're not altering anything on that elevation.
Do you really feel that this is, because, I mean, from what we're seeing here, it looks like, even though you're saying that's secondary, to me, it's kind of like primary, because you're coming from the parking lot into the entrance, as opposed to going on Lake to go into that entrance. That's visually, that's what it looks like. I don't know if that's true.
I don't know that the parking lot was there originally. I just know that when you walk into the building off of Lake, that is clearly a lobby that was meant to be entered. And when you walk off of the other secondary elevation, you're just walking into a corridor. So just from me reading the building on the interior, it seems like the main entrance was always supposed to be on Lake.
And the grander staircase.
Exactly, a grander staircase, which.
I think you're saying the articulation, so it has those towers on the facade.
Right, these towers also, and also, this, this cornice here used to be highly articulated, and it was altered, I don't, I don't know when, but it was almost like there were towers here and here. If you look at old postcards, um, it was clearly the, the main elevation of the building.
So what, they were higher than?
Yeah, they were. Mm-hmm.
The, um, the application for the Ashbury Park Historic Commercial District refers to this architectural style as castle. And, you know, it's in that kind of vein where, you know, it has ramparts, it's got these large, you know, heavy establishments. And that, again, that Lake Avenue staircase is very prominent. That's the, you're intended to start here.
Definitely. I agree.
Uh, and so there is a little bit of a, um, a quirk in our regs, uh, within the Urban Enterprise Zone Design Guidelines. It says that structures are supposed to be, uh, follow the, you know, uh, National Park Service.
The Secretary of Interior standards, yep.
Yep. But that's when you have a building that still can be preserved. And the building's already been gutted. And it was, you know, already, you know, hodgepodge over the years before it got gutted, right? You don't have the original windows, you don't have the original doors. There's a lot gone from the original, the things that made it unique and contributing. So, um, that gives us a little more leeway with how it can be redeveloped if you don't care for what is, um, you know, compliant with the Secretary of Standards. You want something that looks like it blends a little bit more?
Was the fenestration?
That's actually okay in our guidelines.
Did they take out windows like, you know?
They had closed-up windows.
Closed-up windows.
And the guidelines specifically say, do not close up windows, you know, uh, keep, preserve openings. Preserve the, you know, the number of lights and the, you know, if they're double-hung and if they're, you know.
And I believe the windows we're putting back match the historic fenestration.
They're at least closer, yeah.
Yes, exactly, like.
Right.
So what, they're close to the original?
Right, from historic photos, we can tell that they were six over six, or four over four, and that they were double-hung windows. So they're not matching them exactly, we don't have.
No, but in the locations?
They're absolutely in the historic locations, but they're also, the physical windows themselves are gonna look closer to what they did originally than they do now.
Yeah, there's like aluminum-framed, you know, no panes, or something, or whatever, in some of those openings, you know, before, like a year ago.
Right.
When did they start the demo, do you know?
I do not.
Oh, can you speak to, um, the landing on Bond Street? Um, the engineer made a reference to, there was no landing, but I think it's like a three-foot-wide landing on the Bond entrance. And it looks like the intention is they're gonna take out those, um, masonry railings. Uh, I don't know, there's better words. And right now, they're, you know, massive. And they don't look like they're going back as massively.
So you're, you're just talking about these railings right here?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I do think.
Again, not the railings so much as the.
The foundations.
Yeah.
Yeah, of the stair. Uh, well, it's unclear to me whether or not that, um, stair is actually historic, because there has been alteration to that entrance. But we would need to alter it in order to make it to work with the ramp that's going in, um, which does meet the standards, because obviously ADA and compliance is critical.
Sure, I, I appreciate that landing is not a deep enough.
Yep.
But is there a way to, um, still keep some of that grandeur? Rather than make it look like a, kind of, will he add on?
I think that's a good suggestion, and I think we can definitely look at that.
So it's the.
That's a really cool, but the. But this is gonna end up at the DRC, right?
Yeah, but let's give them some, some direction on, you know, so we're not starting with, what should we do? Do you like the color? Do you like, do you prefer the white trim? Do you, does the board have any preference on what the addition should look like? Rather than, you know, the three. Actually, I don't even know who's gonna be going with the DRC. Could we pick the, the placement or?
Oh, right. In, in reference to the, uh, additional story, can you describe how that, uh, plays out with the goals of the master plan? How does it?
She's not a planner.
I'm sorry?
She's not the planner.
I understand that, because she said that, in her testimony, that the third, uh, the additional story was, uh, compatible with the, uh.
The Secretary of Interior.
I was saying the design guidelines of Ashbury Park.
Well, I'm asking how, how this also complies with the requirements or the suggestions of the master plan.
Well, um, Kim, if you can speak to that, great. If not, I, I think I'll reserve that question for our planner, who obviously we're not gonna get to tonight, but we can certainly come back with that answer. That'll be part of our presentation next time.
Yeah, I was saying that the, the additional story complies with the Secretary of Interior standards in that it's compatible, it's contemporary, so it's not, it can't be, it's not being read as part of the original building. It's clearly an addition, coming at a later date, and it's reversible. Oh, and it's not taking away any character-defining features.
But, um, to, to Ms. Miller's point, uh, we would appreciate, if there, if there is commentary on just the overall aesthetic, architectural aesthetic, any of the historic preservation, uh, issues that we're talking about now, that we can take into a meeting with the Development Review Committee, that would be appreciated, uh, except the board has comments.
What was it, is it black, gray?
But we don't have any architectural plans. Right, we have nothing.
We have, we haven't got, we haven't gotten that far yet, right?
Well, we need to.
We have architectural plans.
We have, we have the renderings.
But I feel like.
Oh, you have, we have, we have, we submitted architectural plans, correct, yes. But we haven't had architect.
Do you have any architectural plans?
I can't seem to find them.
Here, yeah.
And they're put out in the, yeah.
No, they were, they were in the initial submission, uh.
They're like the model?
Yes.
Yeah, here they are, where are all those?
Uh, I, I don't get printed, so I, I don't believe they're.
Okay.
Was it not in the One, it's not in the One Drive?
The renderings aren't in One Drive either.
Right, they're not in the One.
No, I didn't, I didn't get them.
DUC Docs number six-one-six, six-six-seven-sixth, version one.
So when you, uh.
Site plans admission, right?
When you, uh, got the colors for these windows, you take them from, where'd you get the colors?
Um, that was an architectural design decision.
Okay.
Right. No, I did not do the design. I comment on massing, appropriateness, what is a character-defining feature. Um, you know, in, in my opinion, I think a lot of people tend to put really white windows into historic buildings, but when you look at a lot of paint analysis, windows were more colorful historically than people really thought, because we look at black and white photos, and we think, oh, it's just, it's clearly not black, so therefore, it's gotta be bright white. And most of the time, they're cream or other colors. But, you know, whether or not black is appropriate, I, that is a view and an architect design decision. I, I more comment on the, the larger aspect.
So is the, is the extension, is it set back for?
It, it's set back behind the existing parapet. The exact dimension, I am not sure.
Is that on both sides?
Yes, on all sides. Even the alleys.
They basically have to just fit inside the existing facade.
Yes, that was one of my first questions about whether or not they could set it back even more, but I believe that because of the roofline, if they set it back even more, they would lose so much square footage because of, of the, um, jet-outs, that it, they couldn't make it work.
And in the future, would we be able to also get the, the north side, uh, rendering? Because at this point, we, we don't have the side-facing, um.
From here?
No, from, no, no, the, the north, I'm sorry, it's the north side. North side.
The other side.
Yeah, the other side. Mm-hmm.
No.
Like, does it look the same as that alley?
Yeah.
You know, the other alley that's in the back?
Got it.
Does it look the same?
Can we put that together?
I don't know.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put that together for, um.
Just to add it to.
Yep.
So that we can see, because we like to see all sides.
Yeah. East side.
And one other thing that if we could add to this or something else, there is a building that, that was, uh, that was just, uh, done not that long ago, that I don't know if it's higher than this one, it's the one right in back of this. It has a yellow square. Does that square, or how high does that building go compared to this?
It's higher.
Is it higher, the other one's higher?
It's.
So how did, you know, how do those windows work with the windows of that building? You know, because if, if you're, do you have windows in the back? I don't know. So that's why we're asking for the north side version. So we can see where those windows are and how that all fits in together as well.
Okay. We will put that together for next time as well. Okay. Um, we were getting close to ten o'clock. Does any additional questions for Kim? Otherwise, we'll go over to the public, and that could be our final witness for tonight.
Does anyone, anyone from the board?
The scaling of the addition, so maybe the elevation. It looks like the, the first two levels are about ten feet, and the addition's fifteen feet. And it, to me, makes the whole addition seem out of scale compared to the original building. What are your thoughts?
I mean, I, I think that what is also sweet, like, especially with this rendering here, um, the parapet is much higher, because this floor height in this section is different than the floor heights here. So it, it's looking larger here than it is here, but I think it's appropriate that at the most, you know, articulated elevation, it's really only a couple feet above the, these towers here. So I think when you take that into consideration, the scale works, because it's not, you don't wanna get too close to these towers, I think it would look awkward. And the same here, you know, I, I think that the, the pitch of the parapet is kind of skewing different views, so it looks really big in some places, but it's, it's tied together when the parapets go up.
I also think what you're not showing in your elevations, or this is not your issue, is you're showing the top of the new roof, not the top of the finished fourth floor. So it looks, like, if I look at this, it, it appears that your, your fourth floor is at twenty-nine feet four inches, and then your roof is at forty-four. So that fifteen-foot difference somewhere in there is the ceiling of the fourth floor. So I think what we need to see is where that is to understand the height of the parapet over, right? Because we're looking at the top of the new roof, what we see is the forty-four-foot height at the top of the new roof, but what's the floor height of the fourth floor is the question.
And to supplement that, um, the mechanicals are, are noted to be on the roof.
Yeah.
You need to better understand the visual relationship of what's on the roof.
A general building section or a coping detail to help us understand how that's all working up there.
Okay, we'll put those together as well.
Again, any, any board members with any, uh, color preferences? Or do you like the heavy dark brown, do we want? See other color alternatives?
I'll say.
If you don't really care.
I can, no, no, I can say that when I, when I saw this initially.
I have a lot of opinions about down the street, not white.
No, I said, I'm saying, I'm, I'm just saying that when I first saw the rendering, I have to say that I really liked it. I thought it was, I, I like it.
Okay, great.
So, but, but, you know, I'm one person. I'm visually just, it, it's appealing to me.
The original rendering had white around the, the windows on the, the lower part of the building, and that seemed very contrastive to me. This rendering I really also liked.
Right.
And I think there's a huge improvement in, in changing the fenestration of the addition versus the fenestration of the historic building.
I agree, I agree with you. Um, is there any, any other comments that anyone else from the planning board would like to give to this witness and its application?
Not to the witness, but to the application.
Okay.
As much as I'm the jerk who puts his phone, home phone number on my business card, ever since Mr. Jamal bought this property many years ago, and really bailed out at Harold Daily Post one-three-three-three, because they were down and out, they needed the money, and now they have a nice new home in Neptune. Uh, but the phone is rang off the hook, what are they gonna do? How the hell do I know? I mean, and yet, but they could've knocked this down, they could've built something else. And then when he ripped out the doors and the windows, the phone really blew off. I mean, well, the, so wait a second. Do you think they would meticulously take out the doors and windows if they were to knock down the building? I mean, do you think they're souvenirs? I mean, so, I, I've gotta give credit, I mean, we're, we're. I mean, so I've got to give credit, I mean, we're going to have some hiccups, we're going to have some disagreements on this project, but I've got to thank Mr. Jamal, his company, his representatives for keeping this historic building as much historical as they're trying to do, and that I deeply appreciate. So thank you.
And bringing in, I also believe that bringing in a historical preservation person to come to us and show us, I think speaks volumes.
Yeah.
And we thank you for that.
Thank you.
I actually want to ask a question. So do you, is, I'm sorry if I missed it, because I had a trouble opening some of the files, but the, your analysis or report, is that something that we have, is it written or is it testimony, is this, the testimony is...
At this current time, it's testimony. If you would like a letter to attach to the case file, I'm happy to do that. It's at the board's request.
It'll be when we hear our final review.
Yeah, I think it'd be useful to have that in the record. I mean, it is in the record now with the testimony, but...
We can do a written report.
Right, after we finish up with the design...
Finish with the design, we'll do, we'll have Kim do a written report, sure.
Okay.
The other thing I have is, I think the lot, lot plan, you guys have done a great job with, I love what you're doing with the building. Lot 11, parking lot part, there's a lot of variance, exceptions, upper crease, everything. I think that's something I personally would like to see more, maybe redesign more.
Understood.
The mayor alluded to this earlier, but I don't know that he has an answer. But is the intention for 637 to only show the... I mean, if we don't have an answer, we have an answer tonight, that's fine. But, I mean, I think that fuels the, what are we doing here on this lot?
Sure, well, I can call up Mr. Millstein. I don't want to get into a whole long dialogue with him, but he can answer that question really quickly.
For next time?
Sure. Paul, you want to talk?
For next time, it's fine. It doesn't have to be tonight, like...
Oh, we'll do it next time. Do it next time.
We can do it next time.
I think the intention is...
You can have a lot more to say.
I think the intention is yes, because where else are we going to park for this building, right? But we'll talk about it next time when we get here.
Do our professionals have any other questions for tonight?
Well, the comment I have is just as far as the exhibits, make sure that they're submitted ahead of time and whatever date it is, Donna will say how soon she needs plans and everything. I think we have to open Kim up to the public. I don't think we...
We do have to open up to the public for any public questions. Anyone? Anyone? No public questions? Okay. What is our next availability? And I'm going to ask that your witnesses, they have to travel far?
Some do, Kim does, yes.
Okay. The question is, is that do we, do we reserve a full meeting instead? Because we don't want to incur the costs of people having to, that you can only do an hour and a half. Do we wait a little longer and get a full meeting?
Well, we need to meet with the Development Review Committee also and revise plans.
That's separate, that's totally separate.
We can circle back on DRC with you once I get with these guys.
Fair enough.
Right, but still, we have to come up with what's the next date.
Sure.
Is the arts plan? It is, and it does look like we are holding it. I just checked. So it does look like June 5th. Then we have, June 26th, we have held for the art plan as well. Do we know anything?
No, so the 5th is the arts count, arts plan for, well, the whole meet, the whole meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Didn't we just schedule it on June 5th?
No, because we have 700 Monroe.
All right, so then we have to hold on for part of that for the art plan. The thing is, for the 20, whatever, 25th, 26th?
26th. If you want a full meeting, the next meeting is July 17.
Right, so that's...
With everything due June 26th.
I think that that will be up to you. Do you want your, all of your people, because they're traveling, to have one meeting? Or is there, we could do it faster in, if it's an hour and a half meeting. It's up to you guys. I mean, that's up to you. We're offering that to you.
May I?
Sure.
Thank you. Here, go. Paul Millstein, Douglas Feldman, thank you. Do you think it's possible that, one, if we waited to July, that we could get through all our testimony in four hours? I'm unfamiliar with the process.
In three, in three.
I apologize.
I don't, I don't know. I can't tell you if you will or not, I'm sorry.
It's hard to say.
If I was you, I'd take the half on the 26th and the full one on the 27th.
Done.
So take the half. Carry the 26th as a strategy. Everything's ready.
And then say right now, and then book the next one for the whole meeting for us.
So is June 26th and, June 26th and July 17th, is it?
What was that, Marie, you have that?
It's going to be June 26th.
For the half, half meeting?
And then I'll hold July 17.
That's great. That's perfect.
For the whole, if we need to hold, if we need a whole meeting, we'll have it.
Right.
Then we can, then you're in. But we have to still carry, we have to do it officially, and we have to carry.
And the person that has to travel the furthest is your historical, so I think we're done with, she doesn't have to travel.
Yeah, we'll see, we may just, we may just be able to get away with doing it for more at the end. Yeah, that was the plan.
If there's questions, we can get them in writing and everything, so...
Except for Paul, who has to travel back and forth from DC, but I don't mind dragging him up.
Okay, so we need a motion to carry to June...
26th.
26th without further notice?
That is correct.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
We need to book James Bonanno, Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Alpo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shonameo. Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Michael Gunnin.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Karzak.
Yes, and as a temporary, we will have it on the schedule that we will hold that spot unless...
July 17.
We're desperate for something else that happens. But right now, we're going to hold the spot for the July.
So the June 26th meeting is at 7:00 with no further notice.
Correct.
For the public, who's here?
No further notice.
You need a...
Yeah, so, yeah, well, if necessary, we can do an extension of time through July, probably, right?
Well, right, well, at least.
Yeah, I would say you're going to need at least an extension through July. Okay, that's fine, we agree.
Because everything, everything, obviously, we will do as quickly as we can.
Yep.
Marie will work with you to get a date for the DRC. DRC is via Zoom, so nobody has to go anywhere.
Okay.
And as long as you can present via Zoom, we're good. We can do it quickly.
Good.
Okay?
Great, well, I appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's not very good.
Paul in favor?
Aye.